I'll order the study session for the Chair of the Village City Council. It's Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. Just to note, we are following the Tri-County Health Department's recommendations. And right now, they're close, but not quite. We still have, they're still recommending masks. They have metrics that you can look at online. If we do better, we'll have, we won't, we'll have to, we can dispense with the masks, but we'll follow their recommendations. And that's what we're doing tonight. I think, unless there's anything else before we start, I think you can go ahead and, and start with the proposals. 1A, which would be city staff presentation and council, and then following council QNA. And just so people, folks know, the, the idea here, the agenda is, well, we'll do the study session. The regular meeting will start as soon as the study session ends. That may or may not be at 6:30. I don't, you'll see how it goes. Maybe later. But if you're here for other business, but there is no other business, but just wanted to let you know. And as far as the comments section, the audience participation will be during the regular session, during the regular meetings. So we'll be following the presentations. Okay? All right. With that said, unless there are any other questions from council, we'll go ahead and ask Mr. Goldie.
I'm actually going to kick it off, if that's okay with council, just a couple things. And to follow up on the mayor's comments, if folks do wish to speak tonight during audience participation, we do have a sign up sheet in the back. So I just want to set the table for city council about this first discussion that we're having regarding some work that the city staff has done. So tonight, we are going to hear from the city and some of the background research that the staff has done. We'll then have an opportunity to have question and answer from council to staff. After that, we'll have the land preserve provide a presentation, and then there'll be an opportunity for question and answer with the land preserve. After the motion regarding the title requirement, the last council meeting, the Anderson family did not resubmit, so they do not have a place on the agenda tonight. So that's the order of things for the study session. For the city's portion of this, I do want to just note a few different things. The direction to staff was to try and come up with some ideas or frameworks about what could be possible on the site. We are not proposing tonight. We do not have two proposals. What we have are different levels of investment for different aspects of the project. I would request that the public, that the residents, that city council don't look at those as, as menu items. We're not here tonight to select A, or B, or C. Our goal was really to do as well as we could in the amount of time we had to provide a frame of reference, you know, sort of different levels for council, just as a, an aide in, in thinking through how this might look from a city perspective. There will need to be priority setting at some point. The city council will need to do. Just because we made some assumptions tonight is not in any way, shouldn't be taken as that we're superseding or stepping on the toes of city council's ability to do that priority setting. That is absolutely not our intent. And, and that, that is a step that will need to happen, just not tonight. We're just here tonight to sort of set the table, if you will. The other aspect of this, for the discussion from the city perspective, especially as it relates to some of the costs, is that you're, we actually, when, when council gave us this direction, there was a discussion about having two possible levels. The further we got into it, we realized for the different areas, there's really, it's a better discussion to give you three levels, because the, the low and the high can be so extreme. In some ways, there, 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 there's some real challenges to doing either approach. And so we just thought it might be good to have sort of a middle approach for the different categories, so that council can have a feel. Now, we made some assumptions, just so that we could have a middle level. We're in no way saying those are the right assumptions to make about what's included, what's not included. It's just so that we can have a discussion about it. So you're going to hear, there's three main areas that we're going to go through tonight. There's, we're going to look at the two different areas related to capital investment from a, from a budget perspective. One is the buildings, and two is the site itself, site improvements itself. The third area you're going to hear about is maintenance, annual maintenance, ongoing costs year over year. So we're going to have a sort of a different levels, three different levels for each one of those three areas. So that's, that's my, my setting the table for the conversation tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Jay and Emily, who are going to walk through a PowerPoint about this.
Thank you, Chris, for the introduction. So before diving into the three different scenarios that Chris just explained, I'll provide a brief history of recent events related to planning and Quincy Farm. So the Quincy Farm Committee completed the short-term management plan for the farm in 2017, and held an open house for the public at the farm the following summer. The committee then began working on the 10-year master plan with input from the community. In fall of 2020, Quincy Farm Committee and city council paused that master plan process.
Emily, sorry to interrupt you. Can you speak up a little bit? I've seen folks from the back kind of go and speak up, so I'm having a little bit of a hard time. Maybe take your mask off. I don't know if, that'd probably be okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we can also check, there's a separate volume for the audience, so Jessica will, we'll try and turn that up for you.
Great, thank you.
So in fall of 2020, Quincy Farm Committee and city council opted to pause that master plan process that was ongoing, to explore the letter of interest submitted by Natalie Anderson. Council then created the request for proposals, which is the process that we're still in Just a brief overview of the conservation easement on the farm. It specifies different acceptable uses for the four different areas of the property. So the west area, the east area, the pond, and the High Line Canal. I won't go into every detail about the easement. It is available online on the Quincy Farm page for anyone to view on the city website. The broad takeaway is that there are certain types of activities that are appropriate in certain, in the specific areas of the farm, with the west side being more limited than the east side.
Okay, so briefly, we'll go over the building costs first separately from the site costs and the maintenance. We will pause after we talk about the three different building scenarios that staff has put together. If there are any specific questions about the building, then we'd ask the council ask those and not have to hold those questions till the end.
So as a refresher, as a refresher, there are nine buildings on the farm. Per the conservation easement, two of these buildings must be maintained. So the Hopkins House on the west side, and the Big Barn on the east side. Under the conservation easement, all of the other structures on the farm are permitted to be torn down. However, five of the other structures on the farm contribute to the National Historic Register designation.
Okay, so staff has prepared the three possible scenarios. The least cost option, a stabilization option, and a full rehabilitation option for the buildings. These are just some scenarios. Any combination of these options could be the direction council takes when they start setting priorities. So the least cost option removes all of the buildings permitted under the conservation easement, with the exception of the pump house. We removed the pump house as it's currently being used as a pump house for the new irrigation system that was put in a number of years ago by the city. It allows us to still utilize the pond for that irrigation. It would remove the National Historic Register designation, because we would be tearing down a number of the buildings that are part of that historic district. It would include exterior work then, on the Hopkins House, the pump house, and the Big Barn. Those would be the only buildings that would remain under this scenario. And the cost estimate for this scenario is $1.6 million. And so, so you can visualize that on the map. The, the blue circles would be the buildings that would be kept in this scenario. The Hopkins House, the Big Barn on the east side, and the pump house. The remainder of the buildings would then be torn down, and the areas where those buildings were would be revegetated, irrigated, and brought back into an open space type scenario. So for the building stabilization, it's $2.878 million. This option would remove, remove the two non-contributing buildings. I'll show those on the map if you'll go to those. So the farmhouse on the east, and the garage would be removed in this scenario. This would maintain the National Historic Register designation, and would include exterior work on all of the buildings that were not removed. And so the cost estimate for the full rehabilitation, this would maintain all of the buildings, it would maintain the National Historic Resignation, Register designation, and it would include exterior and interior work on all of the buildings. And so all of the buildings would remain as they are today, and work would be historically done to redo the interior and the exterior of all those buildings. So here's the summary of those three options. And if council has any questions about the specific building portions of this, we can answer those now.
Jay, are the, the two buildings that can come down without losing the historical designation, it was, what, the garage, and what was the other one?
And it was the farmhouse on the east, the caretaker home.
Thank you.
I had a quick question about what portion of the cost that you've estimated roughly, without, you know, sending you into doing 500 different scenarios. The pond can be removed.
The pond can be removed. It's not included in the building scenarios that we put together. That's a site option scenario, and we have those costs when we talk about those.
Okay, so there are no building costs associated with the pump house or anything like that, that'll all be addressed?
Well, the pond itself is included, but not the pond, just the pump house, separate from the pond.
Okay.
Jay, under scenarios 1 and 2, your least op, least cost option and the stabilization, in the least cost option, we would be keeping Hopkins and Big Barn, right?
Correct.
And in that scenario, or in the stabilization scenario, where you're keeping all but two, and taking care of the outside of the buildings, are the inside of the buildings going to then be available for use to the public?
In this, in this scenario, the buildings would not be, have much use for programming in their current state. They could be used minimally, but without doing some updates and restoration inside, there's not an expansion of, or any great use of that space.
So it'd be ADA compliance, electrical plumbing, bringing all that stuff up to code in order to allow people to be programming inside of that, inside of those buildings?
That's not included in that scenario.
Thank you.
Jay, just a quick question. Is estimates, I mean, they're estimates, so you're assuming that these are what, plus or minus 10%, plus or minus 20%? What are your guesses?
We've, we've put a 15% contingency on these, so plus or minus the 15%. We did get estimates from a contractor that does historic restorations, so we believe they're relatively close. But yeah, plus or minus 10 or 15% would be a, a good estimate.
And this, these numbers, are these based on today, obviously, these are based on today's numbers. And this is based on getting all the work probably done at once? Because if you try to meal piece this, then probably you gotta, would the price go up, or is it that the price will remain the same?
No, this is more of a piece by piece. This isn't a lump sum number based on all or none. This is based on building per building. So we think the costs are pretty good, even if we chose to do this over a longer period of time. Of course, those costs would go up as time went on, but, but no, the costs are based on each individual building, not the entire site being worked on at once.
Thank you.
One follow-up question to mine. So in the full rehabilitation scenario, I assume that that 5.5 million, 5.1 million would take care of all that ADA compliance, all the plumbing upgrades, whatever it is, so that the buildings could be programmed. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
That would be included.
Okay, if you're going to continue, you have site improvements next, is that?
Yes. So again, we've done three scenarios for site improvement. These are not to be compared or contrasted with the three that we did with the buildings. We don't, we don't want, again, as Chris explained, we don't want this to appear that you pick first two, the second two, and the third two. These again are just options separate from the building costs that can be used in any combination. So the minimal improvements would be to complete dredging and stabilization work on the pond. And all three of these options have that number included. So the minimal, the minimum, the medium, and the full all have pond restoration in there. This would also include restoration of the areas of any buildings that were torn down or demolished. So there would be some temporary irrigation involved and re-landscaping or planting those areas. No improvements would be constructed or added to the site with this scenario. So the $316,000 is for the pond and for the restoration of buildings that would be torn So the moderate improvements at $836,000 would again, stabilization and dredging of the ponds. A nature center with a restroom would be created in place of the garage. An additional landscaping would be added. Trees, gardens on both sides of the farm. Specific landscaping areas were not chosen. We just used a landscaping number that we pulled out of the unfinished master plan. And we called this multiple improvements. So again, the pond would be included. Added to the pond would be the boardwalk and covered viewing platform. Are you taking this one?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was supposed to give this over to Emily.
As Jay was starting to say, this is, this is our Cadillac option. This highest tier has a cost of $1.2 million. It is a modified version of the master plan improvements, but it does not include everything originally envisioned during that process. This updated version reflects changes and a lot of downsizing that the Quincy Farm Committee was working on at the time the plan was paused. So the illustrations on the next slides are updated versions for this presentation. They're not from the master plan draft. At the pond area, you can see from the illustration, this does reflect the pond dredging to make the pond smaller and deeper. Adds that boardwalk and covered viewing area, which, as the committee was planning, served a dual purpose of keeping people out of the sensitive wildlife area, but also providing some shade out there, which has been a challenge with kids' activities. Zooming in on the west side and east side, on the west side, improvements include interpretive signage, some additional expanded gardens around the nature center, a shortened circular driveway in front of the nature center to improve safety around that area, and then an outdoor shaded classroom associated with that building. On the east side, there's a smaller gravel parking area with approximately 10 spaces, and accessible parking spaces closer to the buildings. This also includes walkways between the buildings for accessibility, a gathering area with seating and lighting in front of the Big Barn, and then an outdoor classroom with a demonstration vegetable garden and an orchard on the east side. At this time, we'll pause, and if council has any questions about the three levels of site improvements, we're happy to answer those.
I think I know the answer, but I just want to ask it. These, these are not accretive, right? So what you get in moderate is not all the minimal plus new ones in the moderate, and what you get in multiple is not everything in minimal, everything in moderate plus more. It's not, you kind of cherry picked and picked a sampling of different improvements and put them into each one, is that right?
Multiple does include everything that's contemplated in the lower ones. Moderate, they, they are accretive, is really the short answer. Yes.
They are accretive.
Yes.
Okay, this, okay, the slides, I think, some of the slides didn't necessarily indicate all the improvements from the lowest tier was in the second tier, but that's why I asked the question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Regarding the funding, funding of these improvements, what options do we have? Either funding it certainly, you could go private, we can take it out of the city budget. What grant opportunities do we specifically have for site improvements?
We have a slide for that. We can pull it up now, or we can look at that at the end. It's a, it's whatever you would prefer.
Yeah, we can wait.
Okay.
And I know, I know that we're not, you know, putting all these things and combining them together, but I would assume that the multiple improvement scenario would require renovation of interior spaces to some extent. Like when I look at the main house interpretive facility that's shown here, I mean, the main house really can't be used as anything unless the interior is remodeled.
So the, the costs for, I apologize if they're a little bit confusing. The costs for these are really just the exterior improvements. Some of the labels are still on the buildings, but you can separate out labels for the buildings, with the exception of the nature center. The nature center is the only building that that, that does apply to, because why would you create an outdoor classroom in front of just a garage? But everything else is just the exterior improvements.
Okay.
Okay.
So our third category, maintenance options. The low maintenance option would to be perform minimal basics, meeting the requirements of the conservation easement, city ordinances, mowing, weed management by city staff, pond care, and tree maintenance. No additional landscaping or features would be planted. And then in the medium, this option would, the city would increase staff hours on regular maintenance items, increased pond maintenance, and increased tree care. Weed mitigation services would be contracted out to a third party in, in the medium scenario. And in the high maintenance scenario, this option anticipates significant improvements to the site's landscaping that would need to be maintained accordingly. It contemplates more tree care, general maintenance, and contracted weed management. So these are the estimates that we have come up with per year, and the numbers that you see do not include city staff time. These are just direct costs to the city outside of city staff time.
So one quick question about maintenance. In our budget documents, we already have line items for utilities and maintenance. Are utilities included in any part of that, or that's just an ongoing cost that's in addition?
That is an ongoing cost. We pulled, we looked at those numbers, but then decided to pull the, the actual just utilities out of that maintenance cost.
Okay.
Jay, as I look at the, the maintenance options here, you mentioned that city staff, staff time is outside of the, these costs. Is there a significant change in city staff that would affect the numbers, or we should sort of include in our thinking about these different options?
Yes, there would be. Right now, we spend about 800 hours total of city time out there. The low maintenance on this one would be moving that up to about 1,000. And then the medium is about 1,500, and the high maintenance is about 2,000. So high maintenance, and we wouldn't put one person out there, but it's a full-time person.
But, yeah, exactly. An FTE roughly?
Yes.
Okay.
What's our, what's our current burden on the FTE for this Parks Department? All encompassed?
For this?
An FTE for the Parks Department person, you know, an average staff person who's taking care of this, what's their total cost to us burdened?
Jessica might be better to answer that. And just a few other comments. So in, in the medium and high, we would, again, we, we would contract out for the pond maintenance, additional tree care, and those things. So that's where the numbers start to climb up more.
So in terms of your hour estimates, then, is that, is, it seems to me contracting it out would reduce staff time, but it, what you just said is that both staff time would go up, and then there would be?
Correct, there would be both, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff while we're waiting for Jessica?
Yep, she's got it.
Their compensation range is $50,000 up to $54,000.
And is that burdened, or just salary?
Just salary, so plus benefits.
You know, I would say, you know, it would be good to update actually this maintenance option and include that cost, because we want to look at the total cost. So I think putting the FTE cost based on your best, you know, estimate would be good.
Okay.
The incremental part?
Yeah, that, okay.
So I think putting the FTE cost based on your best, you know, estimate would be good.
Okay.
The incremental part?
Yeah, that, okay.
Any other questions for staff, while we have them?
We've got more.
We've got more.
So just a little bit of information about programming, and then we'll get to the grant options that Council Gallagher talked about. So various types of programming have taken place at the farm over the past five years. Kent Denver has held summer camps at the farm, the city's held public meetings and an open house there, the Cherry Hills Land Preserve has held beekeeping, stargazing, bird walks, other nature activities, and the Audubon Society holds an annual Christmas bird count at the farm, which is a tradition we're carrying forward from Kat and Candy. So, staff is anticipating that third-party organizations will provide programming rather than it being provided by city staff. Short list of possible options, history of Cherry Hills Village, Colorado in the nineteen thirties continuing, you know, community gardening and wildlife activities. All of the programming listed could take place within the context of the farm now and the limitations that it has in terms of interior space, restrooms, that type of thing. And then restoration of buildings and increasing the accessibility obviously expands the possibilities for different programs to take place. For grant funding, future grant opportunities depend on what is ultimately determined for the future of the farm. Since there are different specific grants for historic preservation, agriculture, and so on, this is a brief list of possibilities, including two that the city has already received grants from. Arapahoe County Open Space provided us multiple grants for planning, irrigation, and tree work that's taken place. The State Historical Fund has also given us a non-competitive grant for an archaeological assessment of the property, and we're eligible for grant, for future grants from both of those organizations. The city is also eligible for community impact grants from Great Outdoors Colorado, and private donations and foundation grants could be a possibility for the farm as well.
And just to make a note here, so in 2022, you will see in the budget that has already been put together and not seen completely by council yet, but we have put twenty-five thousand dollars in there for general maintenance. That is up because we have begun the pond care. So we currently have a company that has been working with us to treat the water with, we have a algicide as well as some beneficial bacteria that's being used. They attempted to go out there and map the lake. The lake is currently too shallow to put the boat out there and do the mapping, and because of the shallowness of the lake, it is recommended that we don't aerate the lake until and if it is dredged first, because it is so shallow, there would be no beneficial benefit to aerating that at this time. We have ten thousand dollars in tree care. Again, that's from our contracted tree care provider. We have added thirty thousand dollars to move forward and put out an RFP to try to find some weed mitigation, put a plan together, and see what we can do to start to mitigate those weeds at a faster rate than we currently are. And then we've added twenty thousand dollars for additional maintenance or additional work if we do get to the point where council gives staff direction and we have some priorities, that's some planning money, or if we need to go in and do some maintenance on a building that's unforeseen right now. So that is what you will see in the 2022 budget that staff is proposing.
Jay, can I ask a quick question on, so the maintenance cost is based on once, once the fund is spent, to take care of what we need to do and bring it to almost like, this is the starting point, right, the three options? Then at that point, the estimate you have come up for the maintenance is based on having the, again, the outside in a good shape, or is it, because you're not, explain that to me a little bit more.
So, um...
Can we go to the maintenance? Do we have the maintenance slide? No, do we have a slide for the broken-out maintenance over time?
So, what we've done in the maintenance costs is there is some front-end loaded costs, so you'll see that the weed mitigation is the big one. So that's front-loaded, so that's more expensive to get to that starting point. But the rest of them are doing that maintenance to bring it up to that next standard, not, we're not, we don't have a number budgeted to magically bring it up to the new standard. It's a slow process to bring it up to the standard, so it's not a, it's not a lump sum except for that weed mitigation.
Jay, just a question for my own information. I mean, I think the pond is a wonderful landscape feature and wildlife feature. Dredging it, how long is that good for? I mean, eutrophication and all that, do you have to do that every ten years, twenty?
Well, because there's no stream flowing into that pond, it would last longer than, for example, the ponds here at John Mead Park. Those may need maintenance every ten to fifteen years, depending on the siltation, but because there is no longer or very seldom water coming in from the high line, the sedimentation would be very slow. You'd get the sedimentation from the breakdown of leaves and vegetation and that type of thing, but you wouldn't see silt coming in from another source.
Thank you.
Emily or Jessica, maybe you can answer this one. Regarding grant availability, Arapahoe County Open Space grants were a hundred to five-hundred thousand, is that right? And then GOCO went up to a million?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Remind me, what is the, what's the match by the applicant that has to go in in order to be eligible for these grants?
I believe for Arapahoe County, I'm sorry?
I can answer that.
You could probably answer the ASTAB one, I know, but...
That's what we're talking about.
Well, I'm talking about GOCO as well.
Oh.
I had the question for both, both grant opportunities, I'm just curious, do we have to put in a dollar for every dollar that we get a grant for, or two-to-one, or?
No, there's no, there's no set requirement, although they expect matching, and the more matching, the more likely it is you'd be approved.
So if we were to leverage it and get, we put in three, we're more likely to get one than if we put in one to get one?
You're more likely to approve if you have a matching one-to-one. So if you're going to cover fifty percent of the cost, it's more likely to get granted than one that's one covering ten percent of the cost, matching. So that's how, that's how that works. Basically, basically, most of these are matching, a lot of communities, our communities match one-to-one.
Are not matching?
They do match one-to-one on these kind of grants that we see. Some even more, Green Village even has, it's a big, big project, they may have covered eighty or ninety percent of it, because they're limited by the... GOCO, I don't know, do you know, Emily?
I don't know offhand. For John Mead, the grant that we applied for from Arapahoe County, I believe, a match requirement was twenty-five percent, but I don't know GOCO offhand, I apologize.
Okay, I've got GOCO up here. So for local government grants, the minimum cash match is ten percent, the minimum overall match is twenty-five percent, so that would be cash plus in-kind. That's about the average for all of their grants. Ten percent cash, twenty-five percent overall.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just since we're on grant, I'll add too, the State Historical Fund has conditions with their payments. Yeah, the State Historical Fund has conditions with its grants. So once you accept money from the State Historical Society, you are, it's with the condition that, actually, as I understand it, you can correct me, that if we accepted money from them, the buildings couldn't then be destroyed. They would condition it on us maintaining the buildings, so we, and the entire area.
Yeah, there'd be some type of covenant or...
Because everything is complimentary, because as explained, it's a whole issue. If we accept money, that ties us into maintaining all the buildings forever and not destroying. So in other words, that's a, that's a condition of the historical grants.
It would be dependent upon what our application stated, right? If we stated we were tearing down these two buildings, or whatever it was, I would think that if, as long as it's disclosed in our application for that grant money...
Well, no, I think what they'd say is that if you're accepting money to like repair the Hopkins House, that's part of the entire historical designation, and then you have to maintain the entire historical designation as well.
So the way Quincy Farm is designated on the National Historic Register is as a district. It's not designated as individual buildings. So that is the part that becomes a little bit complicated when you're accepting state historic fund grants, because if we just had one building, it's not a big deal to say, you know, we're accepting money for this building and we won't.
Okay, well, we're talking about two, multiple different things here. We're talking about the state historic grants.
Yes.
Which, I was specifically asking about the GOCO.
Okay, we are.
But, but I understand exactly what you're saying, and now I understand it in context that you're talking about the state historical. I didn't realize, I thought you were talking about the GOCO grant.
No, they don't, the GOCO and the, and the Arapahoe County don't have those kinds of conditions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can the, can the grants, the Arapahoe County GOCO grants, can any of that, those monies be applied to structures? Do we have opportunities there, or is it really?
I think it would be very limited. Those structures would have to be somehow related to recreation and outdoor activities. There are some instances that, but very few where you can use those for structures. Emily has more information.
Sorry, yes, in the case of GOCO grants, you can use them for environmental education facilities. So if, for example, we wanted to convert the garage into a nature center, a GOCO grant would be appropriate for that.
Arapahoe County, the open space funds have a bias towards public use, so those that can show a public use, to the general public all the time have a priority and preference, because that's what the money's for, it's for public. We have, there is a more difficult time when you're trying to use that kind of money for a limited public use such as this. So as far as competitive, you can still apply, but as far as being competitive, you're disadvantaged, because you can't open it up to, you're not able to open up the general public for, you know, year-round use and nine-to-five, or twenty-four-hour use, so. I had another question too, if I, since I'm on a roll, the well, did you do an estimate for the cost of the well, if we had to replace the well?
No, we did not do that, we just had that serviced, and the well pump is in great shape, it's newer. We had it lowered seventy-five more feet into the aquifer. We still have, I believe, we still have about two hundred feet of headspace in that.
Yeah, we have a well like that in the Buell, and we're, I mean, the same problems, I mean, the water levels, obviously, in the aquifer have gone way down. We do have the right to drill another well, because we're entitled to a certain water amount. So if we're not getting that amount from that well, we can drill another one. They are expensive though, but it may be something down the future, because obviously all aquifer levels are, continue to.
And we did that, we did not do that, but when we did camera it, it's one of those where we would have to drill a different well, because there are some offsets in the rock farther down that you wouldn't be able to just try to deepen that one, you'd have to start over almost.
How about, is the plan to line the new pond too, is that included in your costs? It says dredging, but are you going to line it?
We didn't line that, no, that doesn't include lining.
That's probably something that we'd want to, you know, you'd want to do, because the water loss and evaporation, it would, it would ameliorate, modify the water loss that you'd get from, without aligning in the lake, and also keep it cleaner. So I'm just, I just wondered whether that was included in the cost. Also, just to confirm too, your 2022 budget, you didn't, you don't set up out as a separate line item labor for Quincy Farm, right? Again, that's...
That's not something we currently do in our budget process, but it's something, as Counselor Savavi asks, we can do some estimates based on the numbers we have from our work logs and figure that out.
I think that would be useful, even in the budget process for next year, it'd be nice to know how much of your, how many, how much time your employees actually spend out there. Any other questions for? All right, if there's no more questions, City Manager, then we'll move on, and maybe we need a time to load up, do you have anything, do you have a presentation or just speaking? Okay, sure. Please, Jenny, if you could please state your name. You might take your, ask down to you.
Thank you, that helped. All right, is that better?
That's better.
My name's Jenny Carpenter, and I'm here, resident nine Random Road, and here as president, board president of the Cherry Hills Land Preserve tonight. Dear Honorable Mayor, City Council members and staff, thank you all for all of your time and effort on Quincy Farm, which is a significant project. We truly appreciate all the time everyone has invested and the sincere goal of trying to find, work towards solutions, right, to make the best possible outcome for our community. Almost six years have passed since Kat Anderson passed away, and yet our path for Quincy Farm remains uncertain, and we're trying to figure out what is the best way to achieve our goals for our community, as well as those in the conservation easement. We believe that the pieces are in place to make Kat's vision come true and create a really wonderful benefit for our community. The city materials had great descriptions, great maps, we really appreciate that. You have our proposal, you have our proposal supplement, which was submitted on September fourteenth, and what we really thought was best is to have a conversation about what are the different options, what's our vision for how to move forward, and some action steps. As you know, we are passionate about our mission of working to preserve local open space and to inspire conservation through education, right? That's why Quincy Farm is something that we care about a lot. The community, we're also a community-based nonprofit in our sixteenth year. We have a great opportunity here to create something unique and interactive, something our community can engage in that is truly unique in this South Metro area. It can promote nature, conservation, volunteerism at all ages, sustainable food to table, farm to table, food knowledge or familiarity, and land stewardship. It will take time, it will take diverse funding resources, but we really do believe it is We feel that we, we feel that we need to take a slightly different approach. We can map out, as the city, as the city staff has shown, there are lots of questions on the table, lots of options, lots of programming options, and we feel that we need to, we've heard loudly and clearly from the community, that people want to start, we need a call to action, we just need to start. We need to begin using the property, build community support for it, and have people build that connection. It's pretty hard for people to have a deep connection to Quincy Farm when the property has been closed up for a long time, right, and people are unfamiliar with it. We really want to introduce the idea of, you know, we have, as we said, the citizens and community has spoken, they really would like to save the farm, to experience it, and to enjoy it, to be part of it and connect with it, because it is a remarkable place, it is a magical place of history, of Colorado history, of local history, and an incredible natural environment to, that we don't, it's very rare, seventeen and a half acres for a park, you know, those kinds of parcels don't come across along very often. Our approach is, again, start small, test ideas, learn, adapt, and then grow. We feel that we don't need to build it out all up front, but that we just need to start engaging people on the property, start with programs and engagement, and we will learn from there over time. In terms of what I'd like to do right now, we have a couple different people from the land preserve who are going to share some thoughts in this presentation. I did want to introduce two community representatives, when we talk about this operation triage idea that we mentioned in our supplement, the whole idea of how do we begin to move forward? We've been struck in the programs we've done on the property over this summer, and as more community awareness has built, how many people approach us and say, I would love to help, we'd love to contribute? How do we begin to? How do we begin to engage that community to support and make that happen? I want to introduce Linda Baer and Dale DeLeo as an example of those community representatives.
Good evening, thank you for letting us speak. So I had the opportunity to, um, ask Mr. Dale DeLeo who is standing right over here. Dale, come here. And Dale has, uh, is one of the most talented, gifted visionaries that I have run across, especially with somebody who seems to grasp every aspect of residential real estate, maybe commercial too, I don't know. But the fact is, is that he works for some of our best villagers on some of the most amazing properties throughout the village and, um, he'd like to introduce himself and say how he can, in support with the Cherry Hills Land Preserve, work hand in hand to try to bring some things on the farm up to speed. So with that, here you go, Dale.
That was a very flattering introduction, I wasn't expecting that, but, so, uh, Mayor, I guess I will, uh, maybe just speak more directly to you since we have, uh, you know, shared roles on the Quincy Farm Committee back in the day and we obviously know each other from projects and different things around the community. But, yeah, to kind of piggyback on what Linda was saying and what I've talked to Janie about in the past is, um, I, I see the vision, I've always seen the vision since I was asked to join the Quincy Farm Board back in, I don't even know how long it's been, it's been so many years, but, um, we won't go there. There's so much, uh, there's so much value in this property and I think what Linda and Janie and the rest of the members of the Land Preserve are hoping is that somebody that does what this farm and this property needs on a regular basis, which is what I do every day, which is managing and refurbishing and, and putting together plans and budgets for properties, can come into this with a fresh set of eyes, but still with the same combined goal for what this property should be and help, uh, somehow in part and parcel put together a, a really doable plan that's not a, an extravagant plan on the front end, it's, it's lipstick on the pig at, at, at first so that we can proudly, uh, hold some events there, hold some sort of, uh, uh, programming that would allow the, the, the community to start, see just what a gem this property is and that at the same time would then, uh, you know, bring more community involvement into it. I mean, I, I can tell you honestly, I mean, you know, I've had hundreds of clients in the village over the years and I see a lot of them on a regular basis, they're not, um, current clients, but when I see them and I tell them about and try to get them excited about Quincy Farm, the percentage that don't even know about Quincy Farm is just mind-blowing to me. And it's, it's sad because I think, uh, the vision that's been presented in other previous city council meetings is, is aligned with how I feel. I've always told you it's, you know, uh, lab school type stuff for the kids, not only in this community, but within maybe even Arapahoe County. Um, there's just, the, the possibilities are endless. We all know what Quincy Farm could be. I don't need to sit up here and tell you what it could be and what it should be. Uh, it, it just needs to be, it needs to be whipped in the shape and the fact that we've kind of let it get to the point that it is right now, it's, it's sad and it's frustrating as I drive by it multiple times a day. So I'm here to offer, as I've always done, my expertise pro bono to the Land Preserve and to anybody else that would, uh, would like to meet me out there and, and put together a, a real sound plan for what, for what the, uh, property needs and, you know, and bring it out into phases if, if that's, uh, what needs to be done right now. But I, I still am going to be the biggest cheerleader for Quincy Farm. I, I, I think it's an amazing place and I would love to have, uh, some part of it if, uh, if the city sees fit.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name's Judith Judd and you've probably all heard more than you want from me, so guess what, you don't have to listen to me. We have a little surprise for you. When we started working on this last January, we said, oh my gosh, we need help, we need some expertise and we sent feelers out across the state and the stars aligned and Dr. Harold Scramstead came into our lives. And you have his resume in your package, it's very long, but I asked him what I should tell you about him because we've asked him to share some of his expertise, some of his thoughts and some of his perceptions about Quincy Farms with you. Well, Dr. Scramstead was the chairman of the Joint Committee on Landmarks for the National Capitol. He headed the, or he was founding member of the Chicago Commission on Historical and Architectural Landmarks, and I could go on and on, but at one point, not too long ago, he was the CEO of the Henry Ford Museum and Greenfield Village in Detroit. And in that position, he had oversight over 100 different historical sites. And he and his wife Susan ran a consulting firm, their own firm, for 16 years and she is the former Vice Chancellor of Development for, um, University of Michigan. So we got a lot of expertise when we got the two of them. So Dr. Scramstead will, will share a few thoughts with you about Quincy Farms. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Judith, for that introduction. Um, I won't take a lot of your time, but I'd like to, I was brought in and asked by the Land Preserve to sort of provide a somewhat independent perspective, uh, looking at it from a little different perspective than, um, what others had looked at. And, um, in, in reviewing the documents and spending a lot of time on the site, um, I came back to the original Visioning Committee, uh, report, which in my opinion was an extraordinarily wonderful piece of work. And I think the mission they came up with, "The mission of Quincy Farms is to preserve Colorado's heritage with responsible stewardship of a century-old farm through sustainable management, habitat conservation, and farm activities. Quincy Farm emphasizes youth education, community programming, sustainable environmental practices, and cultural opportunities in a rural historic setting." I don't think you can do better than that and I really commend the Visioning Committee and the community, uh, for that mission statement. So in addition to a solid mission, you also have some guiding constraints. The first one obviously is the conservation easement. And in looking at the conservation easement from my perspective, you've been given an amazing gift of land and improvements with donor restrictions that in my experience are not onerous at all, but reinforce one would hope would be important community values in any community. And that is protection of natural habitat, protection of open space, protection of historical heritage, and providing informal learning experiences consistent with the values above. To me, that is a, a real open invitation to imaginative thinking and community programming. It's also interesting that the legal holder of the easement, Colorado Open Lands, is quite clear that they consider the landowner the best steward of the land and quote, "would never interfere with the operation unless it negatively impacts the conserva- conservation values," which the landowner helps to determine and define. The point here is that the landowner has a great deal of latitude in terms of determining the operation of the site under the easement. The yardstick is always, do they advance the conservation values? Another constraint, of course, is the listing on the National Register of Historic Places. And I think it's important to re-remember that the National Register listing is both a statement of historical importance and really a guide to the thoughtful treatment of the structures on the site. The rationale for listing Quincy Farms, it is, it is because it is typical of agricultural land use in Colorado that has almost disappeared, is important primarily because it continues to exist. And that I think is a very important issue. Listing on the National Register is also, as you all know, great value in seeking support from either the state of Colorado or for federal funds. The guidelines for preservation, in the case of Quincy Farms, to me, are not onerous at all. They really are in the category of do no harm. This means the preservation costs for structures contributing to its listing to the National Register will be far less than if the structure's embodied unique national historical or architectural significance. So the question is how best to carry out the mission with these constraints? And it seems to me Cherry Hills Village has a potential partner in the Cherry Hills Land Preserve that has extensive experience in using the site for a variety of educational programs, all of which promote the conservation values of the donor. In addition, the Land, uh, Preserve has made it clear that they would be an enthusiastic and operating and fundraising partner with Cherry Hills Village in ensuring that the site is safe, secure, well-preserved, well-maintained, and appropriately used by the community, consistent with the values of the conservation easement. It has identified and reached out to a number of other potential strategic partners that contribute to the success of this. I think it's important to remember that the vision of Quincy Farms should drive the treatment of each element of the site. The historical and national, natural assets of the site are tools to be used in carrying out the programs and activities that reinforce the conservation values outlined in the easement. The planned activities at Quincy Farms should determine the specific costs of preservation and maintenance, since they will determine the level of change to the natural and historic features. It is my experience, uh, over the last 50 years, that the best plans are not those that are blue-skied without constraints, but are developed in response to them. The constraints contained in the easement and the National Register listing can be powerful stimulants, in my experience, to imaginative planning, and I think you've heard a lot of that enthusiasm, uh, tonight. And not just for the site as a whole, but for each of the individual structures on it. And this can be accomplished, in my opinion, with very limited operating and capital costs to begin with. The key is to start, to have a plan of action, to start the program, learn from those programs, and that in sense will set your priorities for preservation, for rehabilitation, for maintenance. But those things can only be determined by experience and the way to start is to start. And I think the triage program that they've come up with is a very reasonable starting point. You don't know your community until you interact with it, till you attract them to your site, and then you make the course corrections necessary and you go from there and it is a slow process, but an inevitable process of building support from the community and that support of the community also attracts the dollars that attracts more community support. So that has been my experience and I would really, as an outsider, encourage Cherry Hills Village to start moving ahead with this, to test it, to see how it goes, and to use its programmatic, uh, experience to really drive the preservation and the maintenance process. So thank you, if, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, appreciate your words and thoughts.
Okay, and as we've talked about, just start. What does that look like, right? What you, as you know, in our proposal, we are proposing that we start with, um, launching a farm-like campus on the east side so we can begin engaging people on the east side of the property, um, and continuing our nature and education programs on the west side, which are mostly happening outdoors anyway, and we've been doing for a while and have gotten great responses to. And having permission to begin to start launching those things, trying to raise resources and fundraising, um, to support those programs. The idea of building something where kids can explore a farm, people can connect to our rural history and heritage as well as their natural environment. It is amazing how many stories we have heard as people have been on the property about, wow, this reminds me of where I grew up, my kids don't get a chance to do this anymore. This is, you know, this is unstructured play, this is a chance to explore and test ideas. People really connect with that and we would like to create a space where, um, we can have education programs, as we've talked about ad nauseam, um, everything from, uh, education gardens, learning how, uh, composting, learning about soil restoration, um, hands-on learning, free play, uh, exploring, learn and explore, right? And see what you can, both for, for kids and adults of all ages, um, and continue what we're doing on the west side, but we need to get your permission to start because we can't really raise money for these things, um, specifically without permission from the city, right? Because it is owned by the city. We look forward to having a collaboration on that. Um, you have seen our budgets, um, they are, you know, evolving, but we do believe that, you know, if we're trying to raise approximately $600,000 to start, to do a three, first three years of this farm-like campus on the east side, we have received pledges, or I should say, conditional commitments, um, equal to 40% of that amount, even before people have known exactly how, what our role will be and how it's moving forward, right? And what's the vision, how it fits into the bigger picture. Again, people care about this place, they really want to see something happen and we would like to help make that happen. In terms of what our capacity is and what we bring to the table, as I said earlier, right? Creating programs and creating a sense of community comes first, as, uh, Dr. Schramsted mentioned, um, but that's, it helps with unleash resources, right? You kind of need to prove traction, you need to show there's demand for these things, that there's interest and that people want to participate. And we think about our small community, but we also think the, you know, it's a ripple effect, concentric circles. We can benefit people outside of just our Cherry Hills Village itself, though obviously you need to make sure we're creating benefit for local residents. And we understand that. We believe that we are, we can bring a couple of things to the table and in the interest of time, I will try to be, uh, brief. One, we can bring our 501(c)(3) status, right? We can raise resources, we can channel local donations, um, for Quincy Farm. We can also, as a 501(c)(3), every, all of the grant writer, resources I've spoken with, um, as a nonprofit, we can access very different resources than the city can, right? In terms of funding for operations, for structures, for conservation value preservation. Um, and we want to do that. We want to use that 501(c)(3), 501(c)(3) status to benefit the community, um, raising, recognizing we will need local community dollars to support Quincy Farm, we will also need city dollars, we will need outside grants, public and private, right, to bring to resource, to, to bring to bear, to build this vision. But we have flexibility and we have time. We want to do this right and we want to make sure that we're bringing in resources that build a sustainable, uh, vision and sustainable model for Quincy Farm. And when I say sustainable, I don't mean financially sustainable. Yes, there'll be some earned revenue streams, it will always need some grant funding and outside, that's why we want to keep it small, lean, and not build something that then has a huge price tag with it, because then you have to backfill and find a way to use it, right? So we can keep it small and engage that community support, provide real community value to our, to the citizens of our community as well as the neighborhoods around us, right? Number one, the 501(c)(3) status. Two, we feel that we can bring in grant writing capacity and help people raise money for this. And we don't have all that expertise on staff, we've identified three grant writers, as you can see in the, sorry, is that easier? Sorry. Grant writing capacity, thank you, sorry about that, Dan. So in the packet, you see a one-pager that summarizes three grant writers that we've had conversations with, um, uh, two with historic preservation grant experience and his, um, had conversations with, two with historic preservation grant experience, and his, not just from the state historical fund, but other resources as well, plus another grant writer who's very interested in working with us, has worked with similar organizations, including Urban Farm, where Dr. Scramstad was on the board as well. And we think there are resources out there. Community, we have strong partnerships and relationships in the community, we have great partners with partnerships with Denver Audubon, Nature's Educators, and others, and we think they're incredibly valuable resources to bring into our community and help bring the farm alive. And that community fundraising, right? Yes, we are small. We've always raised enough money for what we do. We have been lean, targeted, and we have focused on programming, that's what we do, right? But we fully believe we have the capacity to marshal those resources and create a, you know, facilitate private fundraising for Quincy Farm, as well as help facilitate and support additional grant support.
Great. Yeah, I might wait until you complete your presentation, and then I know there's going to be lots of questions, I assume, so go ahead.
All right, so on the wrap-up, so you're, we're almost finished with this, but we, we hope it's been a bit helpful, but we want to summarize. We tried to make it really as easy as we could for you guys. We're asking you to make some discreet decisions as soon as possible. One, delegate us to go out and raise community awareness. This is something we're good at, we have the ability to do this. And by the way, every single thing that we're asking you to move forward on, we're going to pay for. We're not the Rockefeller Foundation, but we can pay for what we're suggesting. So authorize us to go out and raise community awareness. That's the key to everything. Secondly, authorize us to work with Colorado Open Lands on interpreting and re-understanding the scope of the conservation easement. There's a lot of work to be done there. We're very sure about the directions and the strengths that we have, as the city has in that respect. Next, give us the go-ahead for next spring to open our little farm-like campus. We can do that. We were prepared to pay for that, and we're prepared to do that. And I guess also authorize us to hire a grant writer that will work for us and for the city to write grants. We have three people who are candidates. So those are the discreet decisions we're asking you to make. Of course, you don't have to give us the go on all of them, but we would appreciate it if you would. So I think we're ready to take questions now, and you, you can either direct them to any of us specifically, or generally, or whatever.
I, I think that would be useful, but when you do respond, if you can come up to the microphone, it helps us to end the audience. Go ahead, I'm Counselor Blum.
Yes, I'd like to start with Janie, if we can. I think you guys did a very good proposal, we really appreciate it. I think you've outlined a very good scenario to proceed down the road. The biggest thing I, I'm looking at, in looking at your proposed three-year budget, which I think is great, and if you can fund it, basically you've already said you've raised 40% of it, is, and we toured the, the farm yesterday and looked at some of the issues that are related there. To do what you want to do in this three-year budget, it seems to me that there may be a lot of capital improvements to certain buildings and facilities in order to allow this to be done. So that's my question, is it, talking about raising community awareness and going out and getting these grants, it seems to me that there are some capital improvements that will have to be done to allow you to accomplish what you want to accomplish, and that's really my question.
Well, I think I agree with you, Counselor Blum. The, the first one, obviously, we do feel strongly that having a caretaker on the property is a really good idea, for several reasons, right? Safety, security, oversight of the project, property, someone having that sense of responsibility and seeing what's happening and being able to make, you know, repair things, or call them to the city's attention, or, you know, be the point person on those things and volunteer help. But that person's going to need a place to live. And in our proposal, we pick, we would like to renovate or rest, I would say renovate the, the east side farmhouse. Our original estimate was for about $25,000. I think that's gone up as we've learned more about it, and we've gotten more estimates, maybe it's more like 50 or 60, but we really think that obviously is important. In terms of the learning spaces, most of our learning spaces are outside. The barn, for example, is a fabulous, is an amazing anchor, right, to the history of this property, and so we'd love to have activities in, happening in that space in front of the barn, that's where we've been operating, is having activities next to the barn, in front of the barn, the beekeeping that you see in the beehives and sort of that space. We think we can have a lot of their volunteers, who've expressed interest in helping us repair fences, plant a wildfire, wildflower, expand our flower, our wildflower patch for the bees, and be able to engage in all those education programs there, right? The beekeeping has been incredibly, the beekeeping programs have been very popular, and that doesn't require a lot of physical investment, right? So we can be light on the land without too much physical investment, though there are repairs, fences, et cetera.
My, my other question relates to, on the, the west side, the main house, do you see that as a requirement for the programs you want to do, or is that something that can be eliminated?
You know, I don't think we, there are many questions that remain unanswered about that house, and I think what we have, as I said, most of the programs we've done have been outdoors. It would be great to have, we all share this vision of it'd be great to have a nature and conservation center there, right? This beautiful natural preserve, and having education-focused activities on the west side, whether that was, would be the garage or the main house, something small, something easy. I think the questions about the main house, there's still many outstanding, right? Asbestos, we know there's asbestos, I just don't know how extensive it is, we've heard it's all over and under the basement and around, you know, all through the heating system. So realistic estimates for, for those things, and the other requirements for how to bring it up to code, I think are outstanding questions for us.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I, well, I don't know if this is for you, I'm just gonna, I've got a couple of comments, so maybe, let me just hit my comments first, and then maybe I end up with a question. I don't know if there's a question actually coming yet. Now I need my glasses to read my writing. First, I, I must say, in, in, in a COVID time right now, we have 24 people in this room, in the audience, and I want to thank you all for coming. This is amazing that we're actually getting feedback, and I, and I know it's a lot of it, a lot of it is, is from the land preserve, a lot of it's from residents who are just finding out about it, that are out there beating the drum, saying, let's come out and, and talk about this and hear about this. So, thank you for being here and being part of this process. It's an important one, obviously, one that we've taken a long time to move forward, and I know, I for one appreciate the input from our, our residents and the people who have stuck around. Dale, years ago, you and I met out on-site at one point, trying to talk about how can we move this thing and advance it along, and so the, the continued commitment from you folks in the room is really outstanding. Thank you for that. I, I really liked a couple of things I heard tonight, I want to just, I want to reiterate. I like Dr. Scramstad, is that how you pronounce your name? I like two comments that you made. You used the term imaginative planning, and I think that's a really neat term, and it's a term that I hope we can embrace as we move this and advance this forward. I also heard you say that the key is to start, and I'm 100% with you. We need to start and just start. To start, you gotta start, let's start it somehow, and I'm, I'm ready to start, and the fact that we're now sitting here with the, the number of proposers, the plans, the options that we're having are starting to, to kind of get defined, I'm, I'm excited and really thrilled to see some progress happening here. I, I know we don't have all the answers yet today, I heard the specific ask, Judith, of what you're asking for, I, I wrote them all down, and I'm ready to talk to my fellow counsel about it. I don't know if we're going to be making any of those decisions here tonight, but I think we're close, so thank you, Quincy Farm folks, all the residents, Cherry Hills Land Preserve, thank you all for the effort, I'm, I'm really pleased, and I think we're getting close. Thank you.
Counselor Gallagher.
I would echo Dan's comments on speed. It is time, this has languished for years, and, and we all know the history and how long this has had fits and starts throughout, and it's time to get moving, and I think you have a council that is going to act upon that. And we hear you loud and clear, there's a lot of work to be done, and there are, you've seen the numbers in terms of how do we, how do we maintain this, you know? If I were a neighbor of, I was on-site yesterday, and, and I really appreciate the concern for weeds, because that thing has, it's deteriorated significantly, and so it's putting dollars and effort in those kinds of activities. First maintenance, we gotta maintain the place, and then start improving the site, taking care of this pond, that means so much to us, and it has deteriorated, you know, with time, and from a priority standpoint, I think a lot of us are going to be on the same page in terms of getting the maintenance, getting the site improvements, but the real dollars are in the buildings, and we've got to figure that out, and how do we manage that, that risk? So I don't have any specific questions, it's really just comments. Thank you all to, to Dan's point, thank you all for taking the time to come.
Counselor Brown.
I too have a ton of comments, but we are going to discuss in our, are we, we're going to discuss afterwards, or do you want to discuss now?
Well, no, we discussed now.
Okay, well then I'll start with a, well, start with my questions. Yeah, yeah, sorry. I'll start with questions. The first one is, you have heard, Janie, this is probably best for you, you were present for the presentation that staff made, that talked about, you know, different possible scenarios, and of course, it's a spectrum, not, those were just sort of three points on the spectrum. As I hear you talking about things that, you know, you might do on, on the properties, particularly on the east side with your community farm idea, do you, where do you see, I guess it would be important for the city and the land preserve, if we were to move forward, to work together on that, so that, you know, we don't have a vision for a sample vegetable garden over here, but then you go build one over there, and how do you envision that might work? How's that going to work?
So, so when, I assume you're, think you're referring to, like, we'd just be on the east side, and perhaps you'd be doing, the city would be doing something on the west side, or just?
No, more like, you know, you mentioned, you mentioned a garden, like, you might add more wildflowers for bee habitat. Well, you know, that wasn't necessarily in a plan that was shown to us, it may or may not be in a plan at some point, and so I guess I would want to just make sure that we're, we're kind of all on the same page of where we're headed with it, and where do you ultimately see that part of the vision coming into play?
So, let me address, I'll make a few points, and then I can see if anybody else wants to add anything, but one, collaboration is key, right? The city staff knows this property really well, has invented, has invested huge amounts of time, understands it very well, and has cared for this property, right? And, and yes, there's deferred maintenance, but also there has been, you know, a lot of research and a lot of time. So we really believe strongly in collaboration. We are very flexible, right? The land preserve is independent local nonprofit, you, the city, owns this property, right? We are saying, we would love to be part of the team, we would love to help, we would love to bring the resources and capacities we have, small as they may be, and we are not the Rockefellers, but we are happy to bring those to work toward a common goal and find solutions that work for everybody in the community, right? That's not mean, doesn't mean it has to be just the land preserve's vision, we want to need to listen, we need to understand the concerns of neighbors, we need to understand the goals of partners and the city. This does require communication and collaboration, not just picking, yep, we're just going to pick this vision, right? So in terms of making sure those things work together, I think you need to balance, right? You can explore all the opportunities and possibilities, but you also need to sometimes take the leap and say, here's what we'd love to start with, let's see how it works, let's see what people like, what engages people, you know, our ideas of having education gardens and, you know, the community beekeeping, and eventually small animals, once the property, once we are able to, you know, fix up the, the chicken coop, not up to historic standards, may I point out, not $43,000 worth, but, you know, fixing those things up so we can have small animals, minimal impact, light on the land, but engages people so they can participate in the property. Then it's going to be, you know, continuing to get feedback from the neighbors. This is, we need to be a community-based nonprofit, we want to reach out and listen, and we did include an attachment to your packet that talks about sort of how we would think about approaching community outreach and getting those stakeholders, finding out who they are, building awareness, finding ways that everyone can help, and begin to figure out what are those resources and who are those volunteers we can bring. We don't want to necessarily have a free-for-all and go back to ground to, to point zero, right? So it's a bit of a dance, but we need to workshop and listen and make sure we're designing things that people want.
And so I think to follow on that, I guess I'm thinking more specifically an organizational structure, and let me just throw out like a hypothetical example, you're out there raising money, you're doing a great job, somebody comes to you and says, we're willing to give you a million dollars to turn the garage into...
A nature center.
Well, and not, but not a nature center, not something that we're like, yes, that's been in the, and not something that's in violation of the conservation easement either, but just something that isn't in our collective long-term vision for that property. Where does that, you know, should we resurrect the committee, the Quincy Farm Committee? To, to what, should we create some new structure?
I guess I haven't thought about the formal structures, and I don't know if Judith, you have some thoughts on that as well, or Harold, but I feel like dialogue is what's important, and communication. And certainly, we would never accept money for anything unless it was part of, of the city-approved vision, right? This is going to take both parties working together, because we're going to need resources from both sides. So I don't think we'd ever be in a situation where we'd say, great, we raised a million dollars, so therefore, this needs to look this way.
You know, but yes, but I can see, you know, the flip side is that I could see you saying, hey, we were out talking to so-and-so, they're willing to give us a million dollars to convert the garage into a nature center, are you willing to go ahead with that part of the vision? You know, obviously, that would require capital improvements, and, and maybe I shouldn't say a million dollars, because that would more than cover that, but they're willing to give us $100,000, right? It doesn't completely cover it.
Right.
And so are we willing to move forward with that, you know, with this? Do we need more? What, and so those are the kinds of things that I'm trying to figure out. It seems like some iteration of the Quincy Farm Committee is maybe the way to go, but that's just had such a, a long and somewhat meandering path, that, you know, I wouldn't want it to get bogged down in the same ways that perhaps those things have gotten bogged down in the past. So, you know, you don't have to have any answer tonight, but I would actually, if you had some thoughts on how that works, I would love to hear that.
I don't have an answer, but just a couple of thoughts. One, something that you might look at is the arrangements that Denver Parks and Recreation has with a number of nonprofits that operate on their property, everything as small as the Urban Farm, or as large as the Museum of Nature and Science. What they have developed is what they call a cooperative agreement, and that cooperative agreement is signed by both parties, and it's a, it's a form of a contract. And basically, it's renewable every 10 years, and it's reviewed by, in this, in the... And basically, it's renewable every 10 years and it's reviewed by, in this, in the particular case of Denver, by the city council. And if it needs to be modified or upgraded, it's done on a regular basis. And that's just one possible model you would look at. I think, in my opinion, as sort of an outside observer, the key is to get a year or so of experimentation and program knowledge under your belt and then you start developing that more long-term relationship. One other comment is, and it comes back to what I said in my presentation, is, in my opinion, mission and vision drive everything. The physical site doesn't drive it, it's what the mission and the vision of the owners and the operators see as what's important down the road. And to me, if you get agreement on that in the community, the unit of government and the community are all marching in the same direction, it's easy to solve little problems. It's what happens when you don't have a solid mission and vision and somebody says, well, I'll give you a million dollars if you'll do a wildlife museum on your property. Well, you know, in my world, there are sort of three Ms. If it doesn't meet your mission, you don't even think about it. If there's no market for it, if nobody's interested except for you, why are you doing it? And thirdly, money, somebody's gotta pay for it. So, you've gotta have those three things aligned. And to me, if the community, the unit of government, and the operator all are marching in the same direction and have developed the mission and the vision together, it makes all those little things really easy because you can sort of go back to the basic yardstick and say, okay, does it fit all of those things? If it does, no problem. If it doesn't, you've got a problem.
Thank you very much for that. And I thank you for being here, what an asset to the metro Denver community to have someone with your background. I also wrote down, well, I should say, as a member of the Visioning Committee, thank you very much for your compliments. We worked very hard and I was very proud of that vision when our committee worked on it, and so it was very nice to hear that affirmation. I also wrote down that the key is to start, and I come from a software development background and am reminded of, you know, teachings that we did years ago that great companies ship. And the reason that Microsoft took over the position that it took was not because it produced the best products on the market, but because they got them out first. And in fact, they were actually kinda crummy when they would, but they would take feedback and iterate and make them better and improve. And so, that did really strike me. And I think that this proposal is a, is a step in the right direction. It's a small step, it's smaller than what has been contemplated and perhaps stirred up some concerns. And I think it is a great opportunity. The other thing that has, that struck me, that's been said several times, is that it's difficult to ask the community what they want it to be when they've never been able to step foot on it. How does anybody know what they want it to be if they've never really been able to see it, you know? The reality is that the farm is not open to the public. And so, at this time, and so, other than programs that have been done by the land preserve, anybody who's walking around on the farm, taking pictures or being bothered by the weeds or whatever, I'm sorry, you're there illegally. It's not open to the public. So, I think we need to get it open to the public. And, you know, in a, in a small iterative way, I think is perhaps the best way to go. A few other comments that I wanted to make, just, is that, you know, I don't think, even the minimal option that the city presented, isn't even quite the minimal option. There are other things that can be removed, but I don't even think it's worth belaboring that point. I am personally not in favor of destroying any buildings, and I wanted to go on the record for that. I think that would be a travesty and would really destroy the inherent value of the property. That's my personal opinion. And there, you know, there are, the alternative, there are costs associated with it, and for a community our size, you know, no matter which numbers you slice or dice, whether you agree with these or others, they're significant numbers for a community of our size, there's no if, ands, or buts about that. But I'm reminded that the, the people of Cherry Hills Village have consistently and multiple times approved, approved funding, voted, you know, they earmarked taxes specifically for open space and public parks. So, people are willing, to some degree, to pay for these, for parks and open space in our community. It's in, it's been an enormous part of our master plan, it's in every conversation that comes up. There was a vote to change our charter to prevent the city from selling parks, that passed overwhelmingly. There is a very clear message historically and currently, and just even from the people who've shown up to provide feedback during this process, that people are willing to support parks and open space. Now, to what extent? Are they willing to support it $100,000? Are they willing to support it $1 million? Are they willing to support it $10 million? We don't know because we've never asked. And I think that this process gives us the opportunity to ask. When you look at our long-term forecast, the taxes that the citizens of Cherry Hills Village approved, by 2042, we'll have $16 million sitting in our parks fund. $16 million. Now, there are, there are some other issues with other funds, but those dollars were earmarked by the taxpayers of Cherry Hills Village for parks and open space. So, that sends a very clear message to me that at least at the current time, that's a priority for our community. And I think we need to make some proposals, and if people aren't willing to contribute and if they're not willing to step up, I don't think that all of this money, you know, so that being said, $16 million, I don't think that the entire Quincy Farm project should be funded for taxpayer, with taxpayer public dollars. And I don't think it will have to be, but I could be wrong. We could get out there and ask our community to support this initiative and hear crickets. And if that's the case, then I think we'll have our answer. But, I'm optimistic that that won't be the case. But we don't know until we try and until we do something about it. I wanted to just also point out that there's a lot of discussion around what the conservation easement allows and what it doesn't allow, and there's confusion, you know, the conservation values are used interchangeably with the preservation uses, which are two completely different things. I really appreciated Dr. Scrumstad's comments and the comments that we need, there is ambiguity in that document. There is. You know, in one specific place, just as one tiny, non-controversial example, the pond is not broken out in the easement as a separate area. The pond is part of the west area. In the conservation easement, it says that the west area can be used for preservation uses. But then further down, it talks specifically about the pond and it says, maintenance of the pond is considered an agricultural use. So, those two things are, they're not, it's not an insurmountable conflict. But if you're going to weaponize the words in the document to try to defend a particular agenda, it will be very challenging to do. I think we all need to step back from the words and remember the intent and the purpose. And we can have reasonable, honest conversations with our community, with Colorado Open Lands, with council, with other interested parties about what is truly intended and the big-picture vision of conserving and conservation and preservation. That's ultimately what it's about, and if you wanna split hairs, it's gonna get really tricky because there are a lot of hairs in there to be split. The, sorry, let me just see what I've covered. So, I just, I would encourage us, I think Dr. Scrumstad, you also talked about as the property owner, you know, the city of Cherry Hills Village owns this property now. It has an easement on it that provides some restrictions. But the people of Cherry Hills Village own this property and they do have some control over what goes on there as long as it's not in conflict with what the easement prescribes. And I, again, we need to think big picture, we all need to be on the page of conservation and preservation, and then as a public entity that owns that land, of public access and public benefit to the community. So, I think that what I really find intriguing about this proposal is that, number one, in all of my years of working on Quincy Farm Committees, we never, I've never heard anyone say that the vision was for the city to hire a director of programming and have, you know, five people, teachers, teaching classes. That was never the vision. The vision was always that we would have a partner. I think that there was always some suspicion that the land preserve might be that partner, but it was never explicitly stated. I think the land preserve and their involvement in Cherry Hills over the, over time makes them a very obvious choice to be a partner for programming. But this proposal takes it even a step further. They're not just saying, we're willing to do program, programming, they're saying, we're willing to contribute and we're willing to help with the capital costs. I think we're all reasonable people and we realize that nobody can step up and say, you know, we can, we can immediately come up with $5 million to just give, you know, philanthropically. Nobody's done that. And there will need to be some give and take, but I think that this is a very, I don't know, I'm right, one small step for man, one huge leap for mankind, right? It's, it's actually a pretty small step. But what it represents in making this property accessible to the people of Cherry Hills Village will be a huge leap forward in this process. So, and I also am reminded that, you know, it, this isn't written in stone, the city still owns this property. If it doesn't work out, if the land preserve doesn't work out, if we're not able to raise money from the community, there's always an opportunity to reevaluate that at any point. I do still have kind of outstanding questions around technically how it would work, but I'm supportive of moving the ball forward and figuring that part out.
Counselor Will.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief, the, you know, I want, first of all, I would like to start by thanking everybody for all of the thoughtful comments. I think it's, sometimes we hunger for community input and really getting our fingers on the pulse of, of ideas. And thank you for your time and your, again, thoughtful input. And on a very personal level, as a person with fairly significant respiratory impairment, thank you all for wearing your masks and doing that. I think it's pretty clear to me that, that, first of all, I have a bias for action, it really didn't matter whether it was big organizations or smaller ones. If you're standing still, you're sort of falling behind. And I think that I share the, the other councils that have spoken so far who've pretty much been uniform in their opinion about time to get moving. I'm not worried about the past, can't do anything about that. But, but as I look forward, it's, we should be good stewards and good stewards will take action. It's also clear to me that the land preserve offers some things that are really a complement in this whole process. Your 501(c)(3), you can go out and do things like outreach, raise funds, that would be awkward if not unsuccessful for the city to do under its own auspices. Programming is another piece where you can play a great role and assist and collaborate well. So, I, I think that there's still detail to work out when it comes to structures and processes, as has been pointed out, but at the same time, I'm, you know, I think it's time to roll up our sleeves and work through that and get moving. Thanks.
Counselor Savadi.
Thank you. I also wanna echo what the other councilman stated, that again, thank you for, actually both parties for providing proposals. Lot of time and efforts and money went into this, created a lot of discussions in the village. I consider that good and healthy, discussion is good. In terms of if you go back and look at, why did we start with the RFP process? It was because we realized that in order to do what we need to do, we needed money. And then funding at a time, maybe a year, two years ago, I started hearing a number of $7 million. So, that's why we started the RFP process. And in the RFPs, when I was looking at them, the thing that I was looking at in particular very closely was, how are they gonna come up with the money? Without the money, it's sister. And we can be here 10 years from now and having the same discussion. Now, we're down to one proposal and any money is better than none because we don't have money to spend on this. And we can argue if the proposal is going to be 4 million, 7 million, who knows if it takes a long time to do it more. But, the numbers are in millions. I'm not stating anything that you guys do not know. So, in terms of programming, there's no doubt, land preserve gonna do amazing job. There are things that are stated and you have the track record that you will do a good job with the programming. So I wanna focus a little bit on the, on the, on the, again, money that is needed to get things moving. So I have a question here, and these questions, by the way, not in any form or shape to say, you're not a good candidate and I don't support you. It's for me to at least get a mental picture as, is this a five, 10, or 20-year process? And who knows? And, you know, again, there are some estimates. I wanna commend the city for, again, working on that option A, B, and C. We know that, I don't think anyone else would wanna go ahead and see those buildings roll down. So, that $2 million budget is out, so we really are talking about between four to seven probably. So my question to you, just a couple question, I'm not sure who can from land preserve answer that. In your, you know, past, looking at the past five, six years, what is the, what is the highest amount of donation you have raised, let's say in one year?
Thank you for your question. We haven't even tried to raise money beyond our programming money, so we can't answer that. And I, I don't know. But, starting with the money side, this is kind of a response to you also, Counselor Brown. We need, the first thing is to start with the community awareness. We're not gonna know anything about the money till we get out there and start talking to the community. It's the whole thing, like, they haven't been there in 16 years, how can you ask them to support it? Our strength is in the community and we're gonna work the community, but we're not going to be able to say right now how much money we can raise soon. So, I don't think it's good to start even there. Let's start with going, the first step, small step, is to go out into the community with all the energy we possibly can and let's see what kind of response we can get. That's the starting spot.
Right. Look, I mean, I respect that, the enthusiasm, you know, being able, I've been acting as a chief begging officer to raise tens of millions of dollars. It's the toughest job that is out there. So I sympathize. Going and asking for 10,000, 100,000, or more than that, it is a tough, tough job. Going and asking for 10,000, 100,000, or more than that, it is a tough, tough job. Okay? And I commend you for what you guys are, are planning to do. You have done it for the past several years and so, in my mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, again, that's where I'm sitting and trying to think, if we raise, and again, I'm going with a, with a, with a, with the idea that this will take a while, which is okay, it's a journey, and it's going to cost, let's say, 7 million. So if we raise half a million a year, raise money and some grants, that's 14-year process. If we raise, you know, a million, that's seven-year process. So I'm just trying to figure out, I know I'm drawing a straight line, but I'm trying to figure out and set the expectation for our community and for ourselves. Is it a 10-year process before we get to the point where we want to be? Is it a 20-year process? That's all, and you don't have to answer it right now because it is hard. But I think it is important that as we move forward, what I will be pushing, our fellow council members, city, you know, the city manager, as well as our, as well as Land Preserve is, let's really come up with some, after the first year, let's see, let's test the water, let's see what the numbers look like. But if we started raising the first year, 200,000, and we have a $7 million bill we got to go ahead and pay, that's a long journey and we need to really start thinking in imaginative way what we want to do. That's all.
Okay. And I'm sure you will think of some imaginative ways, and I don't say that sarcastically, but that's like apples and oranges. Because we say uses, we've been taught by Dr. Scramstead, uses have to drive expenses. So let's get out there, let's try our uses, see how they go, and go from there. Because we aren't starting with looking at, how do you take that whole campus and restore it? We've got to have the uses to drive the reason to restore it.
So I look forward to seeing how this evolves, but money will drive a lot of things and I'm, I wish you guys luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just add a few words too. Thank you, thank you, thank you for responding to the RFP. Thank you for all you do for the community. You know, I say that in full disclosure, that I was a member of the executive board of the Land Preserve at one time. And I, I think this is spot on the mission for the Land Preserve. I've always hoped that they would take this mission. In fact, we've had discussions with the city and various MOUs circulating for six years? Five or six years? And I, I'm so pleased, however we've gotten here, that we've gotten to a point where we now have energy in the community, we now have energy in the Land Preserve, a commitment, I think assured vision of what we need to do, of what the Quincy Farms looks like. And, and I agree with Mr. Scramstead, your point, do something. And I think the MOU, the cooperative agreement, you called it, we call it an MOU, it is something that we could do quickly. I mean, we've done one, we have one, it would need to be revised, obviously, because it's not exactly, the conditions have changed. But that is an understanding, it's not a contract, but simply it sets out what our expectations are for both sides. That would immediately allow you to then in good faith, go off to fundraisers and to the people in this community who are interested in this issue to say, "We have now a, a role to play that's memorialized by the city, the city agrees to it, and we can raise money." Because I can tell you that when I was on the Land Preserve, that was the major problem with raising money, was we could not give assurance that it would actually be spent on Quincy Farm, I mean, because we didn't have a relationship with the city. So it wasn't, we, you couldn't in good faith go to donors and ask for money when you didn't know, when you couldn't really say what was being spent. So that, I, I think an MOU would do that. I think an MOU is completely flexible, non-binding, but it's flexible, it was set out the understanding. So if that's the direction the council wishes it to go, I think that's, that's the path to take. Do an MOU that was set out what our expectations are. I, I also applaud the idea of getting a caretaker in the property. I think that's crucial. I think we, we need to preserve it. I think it's, the extent it stands empty there, I just, I just fear that things can happen to it that we need to address. So I think that's the first priority. And even the first priority before that is how do we fix up the east side house so that it's, right? So I, I think there's, we can sit down and say, "There is a natural list of priorities that we need to do. What's really important? Preserve it." Right? So boom, 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 preserve the property. In order to preserve the property, you need to get somebody on the property, you need to fix up the house. How do we, you know, who would be willing to donate money for that? Can we, can the city afford that? And, you know, which goes to the other issue. This really is all about money. It, it always is. If we had $100 million, if we had $16 million, we, you know, we could do it. If we had Greenwood Village's money, we could do it easily. And, and I agree with you that, that open space is, is very much, you know, valued in our community. There's no doubt about it. And the South Suburban money, when we exited from South Suburban, we said that money would be used for acquiring open space or maintaining our existing parks. So that is spot on. And it's a huge amount. We get more money in mills from, from that than we do funding the general fund of our city, right? I mean, 7.4 versus 7.2. So that's a, it's, it's a lot of money. The notion that we, that the city has a lot of money isn't true, though. I know you mentioned the number of what the, what the forecast show for the Parks and Rec Fund. I won't tell everybody what that forecast shows for our general fund in 2042. So, you know, leave it to me that we have significant financial challenges in the city. You know, those forecasts are going on and I hope that everybody who comes today will start coming to, to the meetings, that we're going to be talking about the budget and how we're going to solve these. There will be, there are significant issues that our, our city faces on, on, on the financial side. And I think that this type of property with limited public use, I think it's been said here, that it's never been envisioned that the city would pay for all of this and it shouldn't be. I think this is a kind of property that encourages donors who have this historical brant bent and this, and the idea that, of this interest, they, they will give. And, and I've spoken to them. I know there are several, there's maybe half a dozen that I've spoken to in the, in the, in the village, that if you can get your act together, they would be willing to step forward and, and contribute to this property. But I do think that there's things that can be done and, and, you know, we could, having, as far as a coordination with the Land Preserve, we could look at putting a member of the city staff on the Land Preserve Board, right? It would be good on the Land Preserve Board to have a neighbor, so that the neighbors have a voice in the Land Preserve about what's, what's going on. So that we, we all work together and we know, there's no surprises, we're, we're working together. I mean, those are things that we can think about in a way of doing it, of, of structure going forward. But I do, I do agree with, with all the points here, particularly getting going, getting an MOU, getting somebody in to preserve the property, and then seeing if you can, seeing what we can do on, on fundraising and, and hopefully we'll be surprised. If, if things look well, maybe there'll be people stepping forward to, to contribute to this. And I think there will be, if there's, if you can tell them, "We need this money for X thing, we need this money to fix the pond, we need this money for this." I, I do think that there'll be some, there's some opportunities there. I, I do think that the park, I, I, you know, I don't know about raising awareness, you know, we do all we can, and this is actually, the farm is actually open because the Highline Canal is part of the farm. And this is probably one of the most traveled areas of the Highline Canal. So people actually are walking on the farm all the time, on the Highline Canal. The Highline Canal is, is part of the, is, is now owned by the city and that is part of it. But so, you know, the, the restrictions on that are, that'll always be preserved to make sure that everybody can walk on the Highline Canal and public will have access to that. But as far as, you know, getting people on and off, we, you know, we, we have restrictions. I don't agree that the easement is ambiguous. I think it, it is what it is. And Cara Openlands obviously has to be worked with and they have their role to interpret it, ultimately they're going to interpret it, and they have. And several times, we've gone to them and said, "Would you permit this?" And they said, you know, we, we, okay, would you permit us to be on the farm 24, you know, for a trial period of having people on the farm from sunup to sunset? And they said, "No, that's inconsistent with the conservation." So they're, you know, they're, they're ultimate arbiters, but you haven't, I was, you, you under, you proposed, Judith, about coordinating with Openlands. You already have a MOU with Cara Openlands. Yes, you do. Okay. I saw you're, you're, something else. But you do have a, you do have a MOU with, with Cara Openlands, it's pretty broad, and it was approved, actually, it was run by the city when that happened, so we, you know, sent and approved it. So I, anyway, we can certainly help you there. All, all the things you mentioned, though, Judith, there's certain things we can help you on. Those don't cost money. I think, I think that things that cost money are what we've already discussed. That's my thought. Any other comments, discussions before we wrap up? If not, I think that's the end of the study session.
Yeah, let me just.
We wanted to provide direction to staff. Do we need to do that in the meeting?
Yes, I would, so that's what I was going to, on point. I, I was just going to say, for the study session purposes of hearing presentations and having a question and answer, I think you've fulfilled that role for the study session. Just be aware that when we call the regular meeting to order, there is going to be the audience participation. If you haven't signed up, now would be the time if you want to speak. But then, when we get to reports, I will, I will ask you some questions about next steps, and I've got some recommendations to go along with that, but that'd be a great place to provide direction to staff.
And we can't, we can't take any action tonight because there's nothing on the agenda for taking any action, but we can provide direction to staff, obviously, if that's a sense of counsel, and we can get that sense as we go into. So if, if it's okay with everybody, it's, does anybody want to take a break before we reconvene? Or you want me to just proceed directly? It is seven, I have 7:20, 7:24, I'll, I'll close the study session then, and then call to order the regular session of Cherry Hills Village City Council, Tuesday, September 21st. And could we have a roll call of members, please?
Councilor Savadi.
Here.
Councilor Wheel.
Glad to be here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon.
Here.
Councilor Blum.
Here.
If you could stand for the pledge, please. Okay, audience participation. And anybody who wishes to speak. Actually, I'm going to get the sign up sheet from the back and I'll go in the order of the sign up sheet since that's only fair. Okay, we have a, number one, Earl. We are, for everybody, is try to limit your time to three minutes tonight.
Yeah, a little quicker time, so I'll be brief for that, that'll be, that'll be good for Dan. Earl Holland, three of you stood. My comments tonight are, once again, about the city's financial condition. Specifically, I want to address the mayor's comments at the last council meeting and actually your, your comments tonight. Mr. Mayor, you said at the last meeting that the city was in financial difficulty, and you said it again tonight, because of a list of priorities that you said the city could not fund. That list included undergrounding of utility lines, cell service upgrade, work to be done on the city sewer system, future expenses associated with the Highline Canal, improving park maintenance, and expenses associated with body cams for our police officers. On the body cam issue, that clearly is a mandated priority, but as I understand, the plan is to initially lease those body cams, and those lease charges are currently factored into the city's budget. Regarding the sewer upgrade program, that is currently being fully funded through a separate enterprise fund. They don't have any impact on the current financial plan. As for the others you mentioned, I submit that none of those are currently priorities for the city. They have not been taken up by council, they have not been determined by council to be priorities, and council has not directed staff to implement any of those initiatives. Now, they're certainly worthy of consideration, so perhaps they will be at some point. Respectfully, Mr. Mayor, they won't be just because you say they are, or because a few people you talk to want to see them undertaken. They will only become priorities if and when council deliberates and then, deliberates and then decides they are priorities. The financial plan undertaken a few years ago to build this city hall, move public works, and complete John Mead Park was undertaken with the clear understanding that any new capital projects or initiatives would need to be put off until such time as new funding could be found to do those projects. That financial plan, which has been in place for the last five years, and includes significant funding for Quincy Farms, has been working, and the city's financial reserves and condition have been growing and improving each year since it was implemented, just as was planned. It is disingenuous to continue to assert that the city is in financial difficulty because it might not be able to undertake new projects that have not been mandated and determined by council to be priorities. It is, of course, perfectly within council's purview to make those determinations and take up any of those projects, or for that matter, any other projects that might come out of the master plan update currently in progress. But it would also be incumbent upon council to find a way to fund those projects and to do so with complete transparency, with the baseline being the current status of the city and its financial condition, which is, in my opinion, very good and certainly not difficult. I'd also like to mention again, a question that I raised at the last council meeting. Why isn't council directing staff to move that one mill from parks to capital as it has the authority to do? I'm aware of the other financial initiatives that are being considered, all of which are worthy of consideration, but none of the decisions that might be taken on those initiatives will be impacted by taking this one mill transfer decision, which will only provide more flexibility for the city to manage its finances. There is simply no reason not to do this, and I urge council to take this up matter for discussion, if not tonight, then at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holland, thank you. Next, Linda Blair. Yes, Linda Bear, I'm sorry. No, I don't see Linda here. I'll go on to Jen, is it Jen Geiser? Or, okay, how about Jen Diffendal?
My name is Jen Diffendal. You may know me because you guys signed the contracts for me to be a volunteer for the Cherry Hills Village Police. I want to say at the very beginning, this has nothing to do with my volunteer work for them, so I do not speak for them. I want to make that very clear because of the contracts. This has to do with me being a resident and resident only, so none of this is at the viewpoints of the chief or commander or anyone associated with the police department. Most of you may not know why I started volunteering, but I did start volunteering because I ran some data that showed some safety concerns, and then I came to the council, it was before you, Mayor Stewart, were here, and we did a study session. And after that, we've had some debate and nothing came of it. But why I do what I do for the police department is because I really believe in transparency and accountability. And why I'm here tonight is to say that I heard you in the study session saying that you're ready to take this up, the Quincy Farms. It's been over three years? Three years. That's a really long time. So to hear you guys say tonight, when you have public comments for the first time, which I want to believe the first time since the Save Quincy movement, which was years ago, I am telling you that, yes, I know you want to move it forward, but it's been three years, it's been way too long. So what I have done with the police department is I believed in transparency, and that's something I pushed them on through data. And that's something that now I want to push you on accountability. We voted for you. I voted for every single person in these chairs, and you have not done what we've asked you to do. I am holding you accountable to make a decision. I don't even care what the decision is. I think, as of tonight, I do think that this is not sustainable, the Preserve Act, they can't come up with the financing, and long term, especially in the age of COVID, we don't have the resources to pay for this long term. And then something else to think about. And then something else to think about, when I think of the public, from being a volunteer, which I can't speak of, about what I do there, have you thought about crime? What would that bring to Cherry Hills if we open it up to the public? That is something that not one of you brought up tonight, which would be a concern, right? It's off of Quincy. It would be public. And do any of you know what the crime rate is off of Quincy? Or off of Colorado? Or have you even asked the volunteer who does the crime data voluntarily? Or have you asked the chief? Or have you asked the commander? It's really important that we make these decisions holistically and in totality. I have read all the data since 2007. And things that I want you to consider is that how we judge the council is how you effectively manage our resources. The most important resource we have is time, and I believe it's been wasted. And Mayor, you set the agenda. So tonight, after the study session, you said that it's not on the agenda to vote on it, but you make the agenda, if I read how the bylaws work. So you could feasibly make a decision, and then you limit our commentary for three minutes. So that tells me, do you really believe that you want to hear public comment when you bring down the minutes that we're supposed to speak, and it wasn't on the agenda, which you could alter the agenda, correct? That's what I'm asking. But I think those are the things that are important when we talk about making something public. And also, in a COVID era, we need to think about where the money's gonna go. Who are the people that are really making our village thrive? And I would say it's the first responders. And what I would say is, we should budget things instead of beautification, sometimes for safety. And that is the rub, and I know that's the rub that I've had with Mr. Gallagher in the past. But that's something that's super important, and I want you to hear that, and that's why I'm here, is accountability. And I appreciate, I've seen in the minutes, Mr. Sheldon, you've talked about transparency. And again, tonight in the study session, you said transparency, and I really appreciate that. Because I think the public really needs to have that decision-making power, and that's why I appreciate the study session tonight. But I do think it's time to make a decision. It's been years. Push forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next, Michael McAllister. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I live at 4140 East Quincy, immediately adjacent to Quincy Farm. I bought the piece of property last July in 2020. So I'm a new village property owner, but familiar with the area for a long time. And I was, first of all, really thrilled to hear that there's actually some traction, something that's gonna happen. Many of you have vocalized that you're going to do something, make something happen. I understand, you know, six years has gone by. I have actually been part of a closer neighborhood group that was really pretty well-connected with Natalie Anderson and her process. As an outsider, again, sort of not the credentials of Dr. that was here with us, but as an outsider, it was really disappointing to see everybody, this council sidestep their whole process when we had a willing, able financial partner that showed up to the table, and their proposal was just completely disregarded. I think that was really short-sighted. Regardless of what the finances of the city are, we essentially had somebody who was willing to come and finance the whole thing and provide all the partnership and programming that they could have done in partnership with the land preserve, but the community doesn't even know about it. They did a great job of shaking the bushes out of fear. And so it really puts a big question mark just on the credibility of city government in Cherry Hills Village, from my perspective. So, water under the bridge. It's time to move on. Ms. Brown, you mentioned money. We actually had the opportunity to have money not be an issue, but that is going to be the issue. And as an immediate adjacent neighbor that watches those buildings continue to deteriorate day after day after day, the price tag is gonna go up and up and up. And obviously, the Cherry Hills Land Preserve is good at what they do, but it's not about bringing financial resources. Frankly, the grant-writing process is a really long, arduous process, has all kinds of rules and restrictions attached to it. We need a financial partner, and now that the city has eliminated a private partnership there, the city now has to step up. And as an immediately adjacent property owner, I'd be really sad to see the historical significance of the property go away, which is ultimately what could happen if the city doesn't finance what needs to happen. All the buildings except what have to stay are gone. It just turns into a park. To me, that's really tragic. So I hope that this group can truly work collaboratively with the massive community swell that's happened, even if it was a bit of a fear campaign. At least it's got people paying attention now, which is great. So I just wanted to show up, introduce myself. Thank you for everything that you guys do. I did say to a group of neighbors that I would be willing to raise my hand to get more involved proactively here. And I just ask you, whatever, whether you resurrect the Quincy Farm Committee or put together a new group, try to include those of us that are immediately adjacent to the property. I think my three minutes is up.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister. I appreciate your comments and words. Next, I have Debbie Wells.
Good evening, all of you, and again, thank you for all of your work on Quincy Farm. I'm Debbie Wells. I live at 4950 Sanford Circle West. And I do think it's remarkable that the city received two proposals for Quincy Farm. As a citizen, I feel it's unfortunate that one proposal was taken off the table before it had a chance to be heard fully by the community. Cherry Hills Village has struggled to have- struggled with how to manage Quincy Farm for at least 10 years. I served on the Quincy Farm Visioning Committee, whose work was initiated in 2012, thinking ahead 10 years. I certainly hope that the city won't still be struggling with the same level of contention regarding Quincy Farm that we have experienced in the last 10 years, and particularly in the last three to five. This has not been good for the farm, the neighbors, or the citizens of Cherry Hills Village. Rather than yo-yoing back and forth between different visions, I'd like to see council set up a forum for the community to really understand both the land preserve and the Andersons' vision. They're both really remarkable, and I think we need to celebrate the fact that we did get two of them. We also need to celebrate, you know, in this troubled world of ours, that we did receive such an amazing gift. And I think it's incumbent upon us to figure out how to deal with it and how to deal with it in a way that the citizens and each one of you feels good about. And right now, I think there are a lot of really bad feelings, and we're a small community. That, to me, is a travesty, especially coming from the good fortune that all of us have to live in Cherry Hills Village. So rather than yo-yoing back and forth, I'd like to see the council set up a forum for the community to understand both the land preserve and Andersons' and the finances associated. And I'd like to recommend that we put this to a vote of the people. While I appreciate the Cherry Hills Land Preserve's intense passion, I do not understand how Cherry Hills Land Preserve or the city will raise the kind of money required to maintain this amazing asset. The Anderson proposal comes with a deep commitment to Kat's vision and the conservation easement. I know that because I have known Kat for- I was lucky to grow up with her. The Anderson family's proposal also comes with a sizable financial commitment of funding. And I understand that a lot of that funding is available now. In contrast, the Cherry Hills Land Preserve comes with high hopes, which are important, but they also have just a promise to try to raise money. That's a very different level of stability than what is offered by the Anderson proposal. It's a different level of commitment. We all know the sustainability of a nonprofit depends upon its leadership. We all know that volunteer leadership at Cherry Hills Land Preserve will change over time, and there's no guarantee of long-term continuity from Cherry Hills Land Preserve, although I do believe that they believe in their hearts that that is what they're doing. But again, there's no guarantee of that. For these reasons, I believe the residents of Cherry Hills Village would benefit by understanding both the Cherry Hills Land Preserve proposal and the Andersons'. I hope very much that the Andersons will still consider and entertain an opportunity to work with our village. I know it's been very challenging for them during this time of COVID, and I'm hoping that maybe we can have a restart. I have no information as to whether or not that's possible. I hope that all of you will seriously consider putting Quincy Farm's future to a vote of the people of Cherry Hills Village. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Laura Christman.
Good evening, Laura Christman, 18 Cherry Lane Drive. I'm gonna address a couple issues. One is structure that Katie brought up. And I will talk about another Katie who spoke not so long ago. And I know Katie, and I know what her frustrations were, and they were the frustration of many of us dealing with Quincy Farms in the past. And that is that, once you get volunteers, whether it's in-kind contribution or a group of people who are willing to do something, our city structure does not accommodate that, and there's a good reason for that. Is that cities should not be willing to accept whatever comes in their door. So we have a very strict structure. And we have a staff that does not justifiably want to be running volunteers or overseeing in-kind contributions. As a result, you get stymied because justifiably the city doesn't want to undertake a certain level of responsibility. This is where the land preserve becomes important. This is where the MOU is not enough. You're going to need to look at these other agreements to see how can a donor create volunteer efforts, in-kind contributions, and/or cash without having to go through an extensive city process? Needs to be streamlined. It needs to be, perhaps the city says, fix up the farm to a certain level, and as long as that's what you're doing, we'll approve it. I mention this specifically because I am one of those pie-in-the-sky donors that people are saying, maybe we will get. No, you have me. Many of you know that I have the financial wherewithal to be a donor, to be a significant donor. I have started with $100,000 that I am willing to put forward toward the restoration of the east side of the property over a period of a couple years to make it at least work for the neighbors. And I will say, the neighbors were absolutely right. The wheat situation was atrocious and, in my opinion, inexcusable. I'm sorry, neighbors, but that's what I feel. But that doesn't mean we dump weed killer on everything. This is an area in which we can work together. I'm willing to- I have agricultural background, and the land preserve has access to people who are experts on restoration. So at least the pasture portions and the fences and your historic arena for Pony Club, you guys have an arena back there, can be renovated for not very much money to get it going. And if it turns out, in a pilot program, that that doesn't work, you've got grass. I mean, it's no downside, but you need to be able to create, I think, very quickly something that gets you through the first couple years with an agreement with the land preserve that gets people excited, gets them giving money. If it's too much brain damage to give money, it won't happen. That's really it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Christman. Did want to go back up. I see Gordon, Mr. Rockefeller? Gordon Rockefeller.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I live at 4200 East Quincy Avenue and a property that's surrounded on three sides by Quincy Farm. I think I probably know Quincy Farm just about as well as anybody here. And I am concerned that the process that eliminated the Anderson proposal was misguided, lacked transparency, and should be reversed. And you can tell that both Quincy Farm proposals, if you read it, the few people who probably did, and the Cherry Hills Land Preserve proposal, both had very good ideas. But the Anderson proposal was totally funded. And I think that, my understanding is in opposition to what Councilmember Brown believes. My understanding was that was fully funded to at least $7.5 million. And as you can see, this evening, we spent at least half of the time talking about how we were gonna raise money, whether we could or not. We think there, and one quote was, "We think there are resources out there." We need proposal approval to hire a grant writer. Boy, this is really up in the clouds. If you look at that Anderson proposal, I don't think there was anything at all wrong with it. Totally funded, a good path to provide all the restoration, all the ongoing maintenance, take that burden away from the city. Why was it so disregarded? I don't know if it's that important who actually holds title to the land. So, we turned down $7 million in funding. And what I think needs to happen, probably not tonight, is for a reversal of that decision to disregard that proposal and see if we can entice Nellie and her family to reinstate that. I'm not sure she will. What we also need, though, in conjunction with this, is a real public education for the citizens so they understand both proposals. And I think the city needs to correct this with some sort of a educational program. And I think if the city does not do that, I think there will be a citizens committee that will certainly will step in and do it instead. I think that this is an important step for the council to take the proper steps so that avoids going down a path of another roundabout or a maintenance yard fiasco. Otherwise, I fear that that's what's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rockefeller. Anybody else wish to speak? Ms. Bear. Oh, I'm sorry. I can't tell you your mask. Please. I'm sorry.
My understanding it was we were taking a break, so-
That's okay. Go ahead and state your name and address, please.
I'm Joan Geiser, and my husband and I are at 17 Huntwick Lane. We've been gone from the village for about six years. Made a decision to be elsewhere for a while. But we first moved into the village in 1980 and lived here for, you know, 40 years minus the six that we were gone. I am really sorry the room emptied out so much. I am not here representing any group. You know, I have not been urged by anyone to come up and say anything specific. And I wish I had had time to go through the volume of reading that is available online so that I could speak really well to the history. But there are so many things that were- I knew just what I was gonna say. And then I heard so many things tonight that, well, really changed my mind about what I was gonna say. I am here because I heard that perhaps the city was considering changing the title to the land. And I have real objection to that. First of all, when someone makes a gift, and I did not know her, I don't know the family, I think the only person I know in this room is my husband. At this point, some of the others, well, two others left. But this land was a gift- But this land was a gift in perpetuity to the city. The city, by your own words, and I think there would be no disagreement, the city is the citizens, the homeowners, the landowners, the occupants. And I don't think that there's any reason to jump to giving way this property to anybody. And that's not what the land preserve is asking for. There, I mean, I was so impressed with their presentation and not knowing them and having met with them or anything, but to me, they're a real bluebird to us, that a group with such a deep well, with experience and knowledge and commitment, and I say probably does have the ability to raise the funds. There's been a lot of, you know, talking about the money, the money, the money. That piece of land is not going to bankrupt this city. And if people knew, which, I mean, so many citizens do not know, that this is, this controversy is even going on, if they knew, well, then I think that they would just be jumping to the cause. But I think it'd be a real shame when such an organized group has brought in such talent that we didn't, if we don't give them a chance. And I don't see any reason why we should hold their wings to the flame on answering questions about how much money can you raise, and what if this, and what if that. Let's give them a chance. This piece of ground being owned by the city, since it is for perpetuity, unless some, I think terrible decision was made, would be made, is in its infancy as far as how it can be developed, what it can give to the community, how it can be utilized by our youth and by everyone. I don't think we need to worry about crime and go witch hunting, about a lot of different things, oh, could happen, this could happen, that could happen. Well, it's, you're not giving it to the land preserve. You're letting them be custodians and partners to try to put together some really well-thought-out plans, it seems to me. And besides that, my understanding is that they already have been doing programs, and I haven't heard any complaints. If this valuable, how did you call it, what did you refer it to as, Mr. Mayor, crown If that was going to be put up for bid or for sale, well, certainly there would be an awful lot of people that would jump on a prize like that. But that isn't, I think, the direction we should go at all. I don't think that's right. If we just give something away that was given to us as an incredibly generous gift, what is the motivation for anyone else in the village, and there is such great wealth here and such big hearts? What would be the motivation for anyone in the future to want to give a piece of land or something of value to the city? If we're just going to say, well, we weren't quite sure what to do with it for a few years, and really it is only a few on the big picture of things, so we're going to, you know, we're giving it away. We're not, we're not going to honor the wishes of the donor. And I think that is a really important thing. I'm sure my time is up. Like I say, I had notes, but after some of the things I heard, I just had to kind of just throw my thoughts out there. So I think it'd be a real shame if, when we are being made this offer to do some incredible things with that land, if we don't give them an opportunity, but yet we still hold a title, folks, you know, the city is still involved, there's so much talent out there, and so many people in the village that don't even know what that, anything about that property. Hey, let's give these guys a chance.
Thank you.
And then if there are objections and problems along the way, let's solve them.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments and thoughts. Anybody else? Mr. Roswell, you coming up to speak? Oh, no.
I didn't find out.
You can come back next time. Anybody, I'll allow anybody else who'd like to make a few comments or speak, please.
Hi, my name's Kevin Schwal. I live at 5240 Nassau Circle East. First, I'd like to thank the council for clarifying the city's position on ownership. I think maintaining ownership was an excellent choice, and it really does give us a chance to work on a path forward. I've put a lot of money into my backyard, and I know there's other people who would, but I think getting people to talk about and think about the city's backyard is going to be more productive for us. Councilwoman Brown suggested that there may be a $16 million surplus in the Parks and Recreation budget over the next 20 years, if I heard that right. That's obviously more than we've talked about for Quincy Farm, and nobody wants this process to take 20 years. This property represents about a quarter of our parkland, so if we were to look at what a quarter of our park money could do to Quincy Farm over the next decade or so, and if the town were able to lay that out as a schedule of this is what we can do, I think it would be a great challenge to throw down two land preserve into the town. Because if the town looks and says, this is how long it's going to take, they'll get impatient. And I think big donors will say, you know what, there's a barn that you're going to restore in four years, I'll ante up and we'll restore it next year. And with the town leading the, essentially, the menu of, the schedule of how things are going to work, and then the donors helping to accelerate that, I think we could really use your leadership and the town's generosity in partnership. So that's all I'd like to see. I'd like to see your schedule, and then let's see if we can beat it.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Okay, I've lost my agenda. Where are we? This is a little unusual. Reports from city commissions. Any reports? Nothing from, there is.
There's been nothing.
I got it, I got it now. There is no consented item, there's no other items, and I move on to reports, if that's okay with council? I'll have a brief, give you a brief report. On September 1st, I attended the Thornton, the CML District 3 meeting at Thornton and discussed items there. There are a lot, there's a lot of discussions really about payment for the, or the use of the American Recovery Act funds that are coming in, and what they can be used for, and our message from CML to them, everybody is, is wait a while and see what's happening. Take the money, we've already received a good portion of it, we're going to receive another half next year. We're recommending, or CML is recommending to everybody that they stand down for a second and not spend it yet, because we think that there may be some changes coming from Congress, and some tweaks to it may allow us more flexibility. Right now, the focus is really on broadband and sewer and, you know, at least for our community, those are the two that are possible. So that's a, it's good money, it's a good, good resource or possibility for us to use for those purposes. On the 4th of September, I attended the Mayor's Day in Pueblo. The Mayor of Pueblo invited all the mayors down to the State Fair. It was a great time. I had lunch with Mayors Williams and Paul down there, and they're, had a long conversation too with the Mayor of Pueblo and also John Southers, who's, we had lunch with, and he was there as well, talking about some, some of the issues and some of the liability issues and some of the police issues that they're facing now. On the 8th of September, I had a, we had our mayor's lunch here, and we hosted it with Mayors Pico, Lance, Bader Flure, Olson, and Valdez. We're going to, I think Olson and, Mayor Olson and Mayor Valdez are term limited, so they'll be, they'll be off, but they, and Mayor Pico is going, is not going to be opposed, so she will, she will be mayor again of Centennial. And George Lance is not up for election, although their whole city council, I think, is up for election, and I think it's quite controversial, and I think there are a lot of people running for a lot of, a lot of the districts, so they may have a big turnover. On the 9th of September, I was, I went to Akron, Colorado, in Morgan County, for CML, from CML Board, to talk to that district and talk about their issues. In northeastern Colorado, their issues are mostly, mostly housing. They don't have enough houses, their vacancy is way low, and they don't have, they don't have houses, and again, that's, you know, their, their major concern is simply getting housing for the residents and money, and also about their use of the funds, too. And then on the 14th, I did the same thing at, in Rockvale in Fremont County, and again, you know, talking about issues for the CML. And then on the 19th, we attended the shareback ceremony with the Rappel County Open Lands with Councilor Wheel, who attended, and City Manager Kramer, and we accepted a award, and I think that it is here, for the High Line Canal Project in Denver. It's the, what is it called? The Flight to?
Our Progress Takes Flight.
Our Progress Takes Flight. So, along with the High Line Canal Conservancy in Denver and Cherry Hills Village, we were awarded the award for the project and.
When it was sitting down there, all I could see was this creepy hand-looking thing.
Put it up there.
I was wondering, all I could see was the tips of the wing. It looked like a creepy hand.
It was a good, it was a good ceremony, obviously, a lot of discussion about the, well, there wasn't a lot of discussion, but there's certainly mention, and the background has to do with the, with the ballot issue that's coming up in November, in November election, and the importance of reauthorizing that. And again, I did have conversations with people there, that it's not just reauthorization, there's also a change to the formulas that's going to be very helpful to us. It's going to be more flexibility for us to apply some of those shareback funds we have, not just for acquisition of open space, which we don't have much anymore, but also be used for maintenance in our existing parks. So there's two reasons to vote for it. One, it does great thing, you know, one, we get that shareback money, and potentially for Quincy Farms, although they're, you know, and other projects in our community, but also because it really does give us some flexibility on the maintenance side of our budget. And then tomorrow, I'm going to CML conference, City Manager Kramer and I will be there, I'll be there, and who else? Oh, Councilor Wheel. Yeah, we're going to go together, we're going to drive together. I'll be there Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Wednesday, Thursday are the big days, I think. And then I have executive board meetings as well with CML and dinner on Thursday night. And that's it, that's my report. Any other?
If you, Al, would you mind, I would like to, in my report, suggest some direction to council, and I'd love to hear, for other people to comment on that suggestion, and so would you mind if I?
Sure, you want to go first? Council, Councilman.
Thank you very much. I, first, and unfortunately, the people that I would most like to give this information to have left, but I do want to be very clear, it seems that people didn't hear or understand the nature of the discussion at the last council meeting. It is my understanding of the code of Cherry Hills Village that we cannot give the title to Quincy Farm away. This was not just a willy-nilly decision, and then further, the council did not remove any proposal from consideration. Everyone who proposed was given an opportunity with that new knowledge to revise their proposal and resubmit it. So again, we cannot legally give the property away. Ms. Anderson was given an opportunity to revise her proposal, and she did not do so. I will not make any implications about what that means, I don't know what it means, but as it stands, the proposal that she had submitted, we cannot legally do. And that is why it was not considered at this meeting. So that being said, I did hear, you know, a lot of discussion and input from the council. It does, sorry, it does sound like there is some consensus to move forward. And so what I would suggest is that we provide direction to council is to using the template of the MOU that had been proposed with the Cherry Hills Land Preserve, so starting with that, but modifying it based on the current circumstances, and I think to cover the four areas that the land preserve specifically mentioned, which was to allow them to build awareness of Quincy Farm, to allow them to open a farm-like campus on the east side, to continue to do programming, you know, the items listed in their proposal, to work with Colorado Open Lands to further clarify what, you know, more specifically, what appropriate uses of those might be, and then also to empower them to hire a grant writer to solicit funds for Quincy Farm. I'd like to see, I'd like for the city to prepare or work on an MOU to that effect. And then, separate from that, I think, as for us, as the council, our next steps would be to review the cost estimates that the city staff has worked so diligently on and put together, and land on a place in that spectrum that we are comfortable committing to for perhaps the next three to five years. This is how much we think we can afford, and these are the items that we will attempt to address. And if we can raise funds or grant funds to offset that, great, even better. And then, so, so we need to decide where we land on that spectrum. I don't know if that's an agenda item for a future council meeting, if it's a study session, I'm not sure. And then the third piece is that we need to determine what that interaction and governance looks like. I don't believe that it would be an efficient process every time the land preserve wants to, you know, put in a flower garden or something that we, they have to come to council and we have to all agree on it. There has to be some working committee, board, whatever. And so whatever that governance structure is, I think we, as a council, need to decide that as well. So those are my, oh, and then the other, the last suggestion is that I think Mr. Holland makes a very good point about the 1% transfer that we did previously and, for whatever unknown reason, no longer do. And I do think that I'd like for our budget discussion in October to see what effect that would have on our long-term, on our budget, on our long-term budget.
Thank you. Unless you can then speak to that, too, and I would like to say, in addition to the budget, that loan that was made from the general fund, I'd like to reexamine that.
Yeah, that, the forgiven loan that the general fund made to the Parks Fund, and then we forgave it.
There's lots, lots for the budget discussion coming up. Council, if you could speak to then.
Yes, first of all, Katie, I think that's a good summary. There is the one concern I've got, and I think I addressed it with GNA before, on opening the farm campus, there may be some capital improvements that, Mike and I spent a lot of time with Jay walking the entire project yesterday, that may have to be done to do that. But other than that, I think it's very good direction for the staff to proceed with the four items they raised. The only question I had was on the open farm campus, because I don't know what type of capital improvements would have to be done, and I don't know if Mike can address that, but we looked at that extensively yesterday. The only other thing I've got is, I want to thank Jessica for doing another outstanding job on the budget, which we worked on last week, and I think that's something we can look at on these couple of other issues, too, when we discuss the budget, I think in the October 5th meeting, is that, is that correct, Chris? Okay. Then that, that's my report. Thanks.
Okay, well, I'm sorry I was not able to make the last meeting. As you all know, I had a death in the family, and I was unable to be at the last meeting, but I wish I was. I, I didn't get to say this at that meeting, because I wasn't there, but I was opposed to the idea of amending the RFP, and I think I need to just voice that right now, just so I'm out there on the record with this. It's not going to probably change anything as far as where we are now in moving forward, but I do think what we did was improper, and I think that amending that RFP is equivalent to moving the goalposts. We set out the rules, and we established them months ago, and we had two proposers come in based on those rules that we set forth, and then we decided to change the rules. And whether the legalities, Katie, that you're referring to about transferring title are accurate or not, and I would debate that with you, and I don't, but I'm not going to, I think not allowing that proposal to continue to exist by virtue of the fact that we'd moved the goalposts, made, gave them the opportunity to come back in and resubmit with a different set of guidelines, different set of rules, I just thought it was the wrong way to handle it. Had I been here and had I voted no, along with Councilor Sofavi, I don't think we would have moved the needle, you and I, together. have moved the needle, you and I, together against the rest of the room. And that's okay. That's why we've got a democracy. But I think going forward, if we, if we tell the public or our constituents, or in this case, a benefactor who was looking to come in and make a proposal and been working on it for a long time and wanted to come in and pitch said proposal at a meeting that we had already scheduled for the two applicants to come in and pitch, we need to let that process happen. So that is it on that. With regards to moving this forward now, and I'm not going to look backwards, I am in favor of moving this forwards now. And Katie, I am in favor of the direction that you have laid out there in light of the decision that was made at the last meeting, that, again, had I been here, we wouldn't have changed the vote. With that in mind, I am in favor of moving this forward.
Council Gallagher.
Hi. Katie, to your, your point, I would confirm those four, four steps for land preserve. I think we should support them clearly there, but I think it's really important. And Chris, are you going to, you, you guys need some feedback from us in terms of steps forward, correct?
Yes. I think I have, I have a few items for you to consider, including some thoughts on the MOU. But I would recommend that you all have an opportunity to provide your report, and then I can take all of that input in and maybe ask some pointed questions.
So in regards to Quincy Farms, it's, we've heard loud and clear, it's the uses that drive the, the money, it drives, you know, everything moving forward. And we agree that we need to, now is the time to get going there. So here's, here's what I would suggest to staff, a number of things. Get the priorities, work with land preserve and get the priorities straight in terms of, first, the activities, and then back into the physical plant, what do we need to be doing? First, second, figure out the costs, reprioritize, and step by step, list these things. And, but again, the uses drive the action. I would specifically, a memorandum of understanding, I think is very important to make that clear. But we, we've got the energy and the research can be done by staff in terms of moving forward. Would staff give us, work with land preserve and give us a report on how to best activate the west area? I would agree with the statement that there is ambiguity in words and are, the problem with it is we have a limited, what is it? Limited use is the constraint. And so give us a report on how we could activate the west side to some extent, where you don't have people walking through the fields, but you do have them perhaps moving through a very geographic constrained area on, on the west side. As to Katie's point, this property has not been used for the last couple of years, and we need to, for our citizens, we need to change that. Would you give us a report on the best way to have indoor meeting areas for activities? So be that in terms of, be it on the main house, be it on the east side, where could we do that? Is the barn accessible? Is Hopkins House is going to be available? We have our lease that finishes on the end of December, December 2022. That should be considered. We should think about that. How do we want to use that space? And in the discussions that we have now, we should be doing that, assuming that we've got that flexibility at that time. So bring that into this discussion right up front. A question would be, in that consideration, is where do you put a caretaker? Are we assuming the caretaker would go on the east side? Perhaps a caretaker could go into the Hopkins House once that lease is done. Let's just, let's be thoughtful. Let's, let's turn these rocks over. Would you give us a plan for the security of the property? And I'm talking about specifically a plan for the two living quarters. Are they, are they in good shape? What, what do we need to do to improve them? And then what are the, what would be the reasonable costs in terms of security to upgrade both the east side house and the Hopkins House? Give us an idea or a plan to make the barn, get the barn up to code. It's the one thing we cannot touch, and it's, it's not up to code at this time. And so there's no bathroom in there, everything sagging up above. It needs to be, there's some, there's significant work to be done there. Give us a plan. What's that going to cost? And where does something like that fit into the overall scheme of, again, uses drive the way we spend our money? Give us a report in the interest of the interest with the Arapahoe County Mounted Police. Go talk to them. Figure out, I've heard, talking to people, I've heard that might be an opportunity for a use of the Quincy Farm. Let's get that into the discussion right now. Let's prioritize it, and, and maybe it needs to come off the table, but let's bring it into the discussion. And that would be, who's going to fund it? What's the timeframe? What's the accessibility on it? Give us a report to understand the cost of having a bathroom inside that barn, which is related, again, the overall costs of the barn. As a comment, I think it's really important to preserve the natural resources that we had, and specifically the pond. And in terms, figure out where that fits in terms of the priorities. That's, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I just add, the starting point for the use of the west side would be Cara Open Lands' letter back to us, which I think their major objection was that it was unsupervised. I think that they would be good with it being, if there were people, they're watching it. I mean, so that's, that's the place to start, because I think they gave us kind of an outline of what, of why they objected to it and what they would have, would have agreed to. Council Wheel.
Thank you. Well, take my mask off so you can hear me. With respect to Quincy Farms, I agree with the comments that have been made. I would add one, one aspect, which is I don't see Quincy Farm as a one-year budget issue or a two-year budget issue or something along those lines. I think it's a long term, and I think what the task might be is get us out of the blocks, because we also have this parallel process of the master plan, which will take a bigger picture view and give us priorities and allocate, help allocate resources. But I think rather than wait for the master plan, I think we're all of a mind that it's like, let's, let's start. And so maybe if you kind of constrain yourselves to the highest priority, well, if you, you cliche, low-hanging fruit, you know, that sort of thing, I think we, you know, we can get some traction and we can have some impact, and then see where the chips fall on the longer view. I want to, changing topics, I want to thank Jay. We've been working together on Bellevue and to try and get that turnpocket that's sort of been obviated by the Al Blum stoplight, actually, and the 17 years preceding, right? But been working with the city and with the HOA to try and get that project moving forward. And I think we're in, I'm thrilled that Jay's been able to get CDOT approval for, for the project on the one hand, and I think that the HOA is also, you know, very excited about, about the prospect of moving forward. And I'd like to, you know, from my own perspective, I'd just like to keep the momentum going on that, both, you know, both sides, so that we don't lose, you know, lose traction on it. Dr. Cog, not a lot going on. We had a board meeting. The majority of the time was spent talking about greenhouse gas emission rulemaking, which is important. Congratulations on the award. I think so many people and so much effort went into the, you know, the project, the underpass project, and, and it's just a great asset. So I think it's, it's really, you all deserve, you know, our thanks and congratulations. I would like to add one other item to our considerations. You know, we've had a lot of dialogue about money and in connection with Quincy Farms in particular, but I would like to ask us to think about this property on Mead Lane that we own more than once. I've heard, well, it really isn't a very good addition to the park, or it really can't be used as a park property. And if, if those are the case, then we have a significant asset, which could be repurposed if you, you know, financially to help with the Quincy Farm effort. I may be misinformed, but I think that having, you know, asking staff to do a little bit of work on that and to kind of clarify our perspective on it and see whether, you know, real estate prices are high now, so it might not be a bad time to think about it. And I, I'd like to get some clarity in my own mind, anyway, about, about what the opportunities are and what the possible uses are, what the value to the city is beyond just an asset or an investment. The windmill business, I, I kind of thought that was done deal, but obviously, I'm not on the right page about that. You know, but I think there, again, we just, I don't think there's a lot of discussion or debate on it. But what's the process that we need to go through to make that happen if it hasn't happened already? You know, I'd like to see us have that as a decision in front of us. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Councilor Safavi.
Thank you. First of all, I'm going to start in saying to the city manager, I'm not going to give you any more homework since Council Gallagher gave you plenty, so that's, that's good. Get some extra credit once you get all of them done in the next two weeks. In terms of, just a quick report, I met with chief and the commander, and we went through the budget. And as always, I mean, you know, we've got the best team here. They are so careful with the numbers they come up with, you know, they're so conscientious about every $10 here and $5 here. So my hat's off to the team. Great job. Makes my life, my life and my job easier. So thank you. In terms of the five points that Katie brought up, you know, I'm going to echo what Council Sheldon said. We are where we are. I don't, I'm not happy with how we got here, but we're going to be supporting the land preserve now and, 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 and let's rally behind them. Let's go ahead and give them the support they need to go to start. And I think, and again, I really want them to start, and they, they probably already have planned to do this ASAP, to start with the fundraising process. I really would like to see on, maybe on a quarterly basis, what those numbers look like. If those numbers start coming up at a $300,000, $400,000 level, it's great. If it starts to be, you know, a $50,000, $100,000, you know, level, then, then, you know, that might be a prediction of, there are some, you know, issues that we may, we may have again. So, so great, let's go ahead, you know, get the grant rider, get all the, the ball rolling, let's start the fundraising, let's open up, you know, to where, what we can and start showing the public more and more about Quincy Farm. So that will, again, I agree, that will trickle, start getting some more donations coming in. But I want to be very careful in terms of, I think it's a good idea to start a conversation. First of all, great job on the scenarios you, Jay, and, and the team you guys put together. It was so well done, because that's, I think, is like the baseline that every time, that's the one document I'm going to keep in my office when I go home, because when I, every time there's a conversation, I can tell the numbers. And it's okay if it's within 10 or 15%. But that's a great place to start. But I would say, depending on the amount of the funding comes in, we need to start a conversation around what, you know, the, the big changes, or, you know, do we go with the option A, B, C? And I know nobody going to go with option A, tearing buildings down. But I think we have to balance that and not make a decision, in my opinion, over the next six months as, as which buildings to knock down and which buildings to keep until we see the level of the donations that are coming in. So let's start a discussion, but I don't want to go ahead and, to be honest with you, make a, make a decision as, as which buildings to keep and which one to tear down, at least until I see the, how the fundraising is going. That's all. Thank you.
I think you raise a very good point, option. Is there anybody just, you know, anybody who thinks we should tear anything down at this moment?
I don't think, from this council, I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think so. So very good point. You're right.
I, I think all of those structures are historically significant. They show, what they show is a farm operated in the 1930s, and they're by Mr. Blackmer. They have real, he's a real important person in the community. So I, and certainly the Hopkins, not only the Hopkins House, which is it era, but there's another era, the 1930s era, when those buildings were constructed. I hope, hope we can find our way to preserve them. One thing I would like to say before I turn it over to the city manager was, I saw the building, is, am I reading this right? That this is the best here ever in Cherry Hills Village for building permit revenue?
So far. So far.
That's amazing. I mean, this is Paul's doing, so we hired Paul, he's already paid for himself a couple times over, right? What a, what a hire. It's awesome.
Well, you know, you realize there's expenditure side of those, because we have to pay our consultants to review the plans and.
If you can keep, if you can keep raising that, like, and keep going, our, our problems will be over.
Yes, and our expenditures will also keep going up. So yes, but I hear what you're saying. Am I good to?
You're good to go.
All right. So I will, I know that some of the directors have reports as well, but tonight I'm actually going to start just to pick up on the, specifically the Quincy Farm discussion and to talk about some next steps. I am hearing some overall direction from council, but I want to clarify and lay out maybe also with some of my own suggestions to council, just to get a clearer direction, if that's okay. I do think there seems to be broad consensus for, for staff to start working on, again, you can't vote tonight on this, it's, but to start working on an MOU. And I think we do have the, the previous versions that we can use as a starting point. We've already taken a look at them. They do need to be refreshed. It needs a, a new coat of paint. It really needs to take into account where we are in our current context. As it relates to the four topics that the land preserve brought up, you know, I think we will, would be able to touch on all four topics. However, some of them may have more certainty and details in them in an MOU than others. And really what I'm getting at there, the mayor is correct, you know, the MOU wouldn't be legally binding. It's an agreement that we will work together and talk about how we can eventually become, you know, more formal partners. With that said, I think the one area that maybe a lot of the details would need to be worked out would be the, the facilities that might need to be done. And, and Council Blum, I think you're, you're, you're spot on there. I think some of those details would need to be worked out as part of more of a long-term contract. With that said, we certainly could include information in the MOU that indicates that we would work towards that sort of thing. So as I see it, big picture, this is a big picture process that I'm going to lay out. I think an MOU initially, and that would be its own process with its own council agendas, all right? We wouldn't necessarily have to pair that with other Quincy Farm items. Second, I think that we could work on a short-term program that, that allows the community to start to see real progress, allows some additional activation on top of what's already been done, a lot of what the land preserve is already doing out there. That would probably involve some capital expenditures, but I think if you had those elements, short-term activation with some costs associated with it, the additional maintenance budget that staff is proposing to council for weed mitigation trees, some upkeep of the property, along with an MOU, and I think there's some real communication from the city council to the community about the direction that the project is going, with some concrete actions behind it. However, with that said, I think before a long-term contract would be signed, I would recommend that there's some real priority setting done by city council. We heard tonight about mission and vision. I'm a reform city planner, I could not agree with that more. And once you have defined that, I think the land preserve should be at the table for those conversations, and then you could really begin to talk about priorities. What are the priorities? And I'm, and that's where we start to get into more specifics, because then, we could then eventually start testing those priorities against the budgets. And, and that's a process where I think we could really start to get everybody all on the same page. I think we've already made progress tonight as an example about getting folks more in the same direction. I think a, a priority-setting discussion about uses and mission and vision would be the next big picture step after these other intermediate steps that would allow the city to really take some effective steps forward. After that process, I think you could really begin to talk about a contract with the land preserve. We, we are going to need some form of a contract. There was one mentioned tonight about that Denver uses, I, I think that's a probably a really good starting point. You know, that we have a lot of legal aspects of this that will have to work out, roles and responsibility, decision-making, some legal issues like liability, insurance, there's, there's a whole host of things where we will need a contract. I'm, I'm offering to you that there should be some priority setting done first.
Chris, I guess one, one thought that stuck in my head listening to folks is, give it, give it some time to, to understand what you have before you really codify it. And, and so I'm not as, I mean, I'm not as oriented toward, let's get into a contract in the near future. I think letting an MOU kind of guide us and maybe put a stake in the ground out there a year in the future or something along those lines, which could be embedded in a, in an MOU, might be a better way to go so that we're all wiser and kind of know what the issues are. Now, yes, there are some things that have to be clarified even in the MOU, like liability and yada, yada, but, but I, I'm not as eager to jump into a contract, knowing what I know at, at this moment, I'd, I'd like the benefit of that extra year or whatever period you guys think is appropriate to build knowledge about this working relationship.
I would, I would add to that, Randy, and say, I, I agree, but I do realize that there may be insurance liability issues that really can only be addressed in some sort of legal contractual document. And if that's the case, then I guess my vision is that any legal commitment basically would, would be limited to kind of what's been suggested in this proposal, which is basically three years at this point, is what kind of the immediate vision that was outlined in the proposal. And so I think I would probably be comfortable, if we needed to for legal reasons, committing to something that says, over the next three years, you're going to do this and we're going to do this. And then we'll reconsider it after that.
I may be, I also suggest that there's not just maybe one contract, there could be several.
Yes, that is true.
There may be a Tennessee issue, and I think you can address these things on small contract scales, there doesn't need to be one overriding contract.
That's entirely possible.
And I think before, and I take Mr. Holland's comment that as far as any capital expenditures, that's, that's a real discussion before we undertake any kind of contract for that. And I'm not eager to do that at all. So I, but I do think there are things that are city, but there are even multiple contracts, in other words. The MOU is just an overarching thing to say, hey, we're going, we're going to agree to agree, but we're going to agree to talk about contracts in the future. What do we need first? Do we need a contract for the house? Do we need a contract for Tennessee? What do we, you know, maybe, in other words, think of it as a multiple series of contracts that may be required with Carl, with, with the land preserve.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that, and I think it dovetails with, with what Counselor Wheel was saying. And a year, whatever time it might be, Counselor Wheel, I couldn't agree more. That's, that's sort of was the, the intent of what I was trying to say, clearly didn't say it very well. I think if we were able to do some short-term steps, and whether that's some standalone contracts that are addressing specific topics, you know, the MOU itself can really help start talking, you know, about the commitment to work together, it allows them to go do some fundraising. That, that would, in essence, allow us to be more thoughtful with the long-term vision and priorities, especially as it starts to relate to, you know, costs or programming or anything else. So in a way, I guess I was, that's really the, the same as what I was contemplating. And Counselor Gallagher, you had a lot of specific questions. I think, you know, getting some of these elements on the front end will allow us to explore those kinds of things more thoroughly as we go. The good news is, I'm actually, I think staff, we're going to be expecting the extra credit because I think we have answers to a majority, maybe, I don't know, maybe that's too much, too aggressive, but I think we have a lot of that data already, ready to go. We had a lot of, a lot of estimates, a lot of costs behind the scenes that we can provide that'll help answer some of those questions. But my, my big picture point is that I think we can take some short-term steps, MOU, some standalone contracts, and increased budget for next year, weed mitigation, et cetera, that will allow us to have a priority-setting, longer-term conversation, including a long, longer-term contract with the land preserve. That's my recommendation to council. I've got some other housekeeping related to Quincy Farm, but I guess I want to pause here just to see if that sounds like an aggregation of seven different perspectives.
When you say increased budget, you're talking about what we saw on the screen?
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
$5,000 for 2022?
Well, the total net increase was, how much?
50.
50, an additional 50 for next year, on top of what we're already doing.
So that was, that was the total of 85 or so that we saw on that screen, correct?
Yes.
Chris, the only thing I would, I would ask, I think there was a point that was brought up earlier, which, you know, we've got to hold ourselves accountable with some timelines. And, and, you know, those that are going to be working with us are now, make sure they hold themselves accountable with a timeline, and all of us, we hold accountable for our timeline. So can you come up with some like a high-level, you know, I don't know, timelines to, to basically, you know, they can review because, and again, it, it, there's got to be, you know, you know, we don't want to put every single little thing that, hey, it did get done, 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 but at some high level, we need to go ahead and, 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 and use that, in my opinion.
Sure.
And so when we say one year, let's just work our way backward and make sure it is one year, it's not one and a half year.
So, so that dovetails with one of the housekeeping items that I wanted to bring up with council is really when we should have a follow-up discussion to, to what we've heard tonight and to really start to hit on some of these things, including, you know, some of the questions that Counselor Gallagher had, but also sort of maybe the primary purpose would be to lay out an overall approach to really get council on the same page with, with the next year or so, whatever that might be. I'm, I'm not throwing that out there as, I'm just using that because that's what Counselor Wheel had mentioned.
Let me turn it around, when's the soonest you can be ready?
So, I have some options for council, it really depends on what your preferences are. October 5th is an option, but that is the budget study session, and for us to maybe more fully flesh out some of these options, that, that may not, we may, that may not provide enough time for us to bring you some good information. October 19th is not an option, we don't have a quorum that night. We may have a meeting, but we won't have a quorum that night. November 2nd is an option. It would probably be in the regular meeting, the study session is already full, but we do have a, a public hearing and a text amendment item that night. It is election night, don't forget. And then if you wanted to have a study session, if that's the format you wanted to have the conversation, the next available study session would be November 16th. So my recommendation to you would be to either do November 2nd or November 16th, it really depends on what format you want to have. Do you want it to be in a study session or the regular meeting?
Well, I guess that part, what would we specifically be, I mean, if we're going to decide anything, it needs to be in the meeting.
Yes.
So I think November 2nd is probably preferable.
Any, any problems, any, is that going to represent?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm in the same place, I don't know if there's anything, like, you know, you could, anything that you might need decisions on, even in that October session where we have room, you know, that's, that's a possibility as well, but I think sooner rather than later would be the.
We could put on a study session for the 12, October 12th, and then just put, so if there's any discussions you want to have, I mean, if you, if anything, just to see.
That's, that's P and Z.
It's October 12th.
No, it's the 9th.
Oh, I'm, oh, is it the 5th?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, so that's, yeah. So it's the 5th or the 26th, yeah, that is, 26th doesn't help us very much because it'll be the 2nd anyway.
Yeah, the 2nd's just one week later.
Yeah, I mean, we could talk about it on the 5th, too, I mean, just as a study session to see if there's anything. After you get into it, I don't know if that's even useful for staff.
The, the budget's on the, the study session, so we can't do that.
Can we, perhaps we could add it as an agenda item for the meeting on the 5th, knowing that there won't be any, it's, we're not going to be reviewing an MOU, but if there are questions that come up that you're working on over the next two weeks, then at least it's on the agenda and we can discuss it and make, you know, any, give any direction, further direction that you might need.
Almost like a placeholder item?
Yeah, almost.
On, on the study session.
So that it's noticed and we can.
The budget's on the study session.
Because study session starts with a budget, is what you're saying.
Yeah, so I think.
So in the meeting.
Yeah, Mayor Tim Brown is referring to the regular meeting.
A discussion, a discussion item in the meeting.
A discussion item on the 5th. And I think, it sounds like though, for sort of a planned, that's, instead of a placeholder though, a planned night, we're going to add on November 2nd a Quincy Farm item. Lots of nodding heads there. In addition to that, since we no longer have the Anderson family proposal on the table any longer, and given that we have sort of, you know, this is evolving quickly, which I think is a relief to a lot of folks, we, we don't have the tour that has been publicized on October 6th, but the following week is a scheduled tour with the land preserve. My recommendation to city council is that we postpone that for the time being. You know, I think the original intent from Counselor Gallagher was really to talk about, you know, sort of comparing these two proposals and having an opportunity to hear from them about how these proposals contrast with each other, knowing that that's not necessarily the dynamic that exists anymore. I think there's, that may make a lot of good sense, long-term with the land preserve, but I think given everything we have going on right now with the budget and with all these other Quincy Farm elements that we have going on, it may make sense to just postpone that temporarily. With that said, I think there's an opportunity, staff would be available if individual council members or if pairs of council members want to go see the site, we absolutely will make ourselves available for that. So is there consensus that that's a appropriate step? Okay, great.
Chris, can I, can I ask a quick question if I may? So has anybody from the city called the Anderson family and just say, thank you for going through this process and submitting the proposal? Has anybody officially thanked the family for doing this?
So I've had, I've stayed in contact with Natalie specifically over the time, and, you know, we've had informal discussions along those lines. However, if that's a sentiment from city council, I certainly can take a more formal step, maybe craft a, a letter that we send that, that thanks the, the entire family for, for what they've done. Certainly something I can do.
I think it was, it was 10 proposals or 20 proposals or three. I, I think, you know, it's, it would be good for our city to say, you know, obviously we're moving forward with one, right? So it would be just nice to let the other people, let them know and say thank you, in my opinion.
Certainly. We can do that. The last two items I have, I will also be at the CML conference that the mayor mentioned, Wednesday through Friday. And then next week, I want to remind council and members of the community who might be watching or are present, we do have a couple of city meetings next week. The master plan open house is next Wednesday, September 29th, from 5 to 7. The plan is to have it at John Mead Park, take advantage of this wonderful new facility we have, hopefully it'll inspire people to really think about our, our community long-term. It looks like the weather so far is going to hold out for that. If we do have bad weather, we'll move it in here. Second is the car show, that is a week from Saturday, October 2nd, from 10 to 12 or 12:30-ish. So I would encourage folks to attend that. You know, we've, we've had a break from a lot of community events that can really, where you can talk to your neighbors, and we, we have these now again. Hopefully they, we get to continue to have them, so I would just really urge everyone in this time where we really could use a sense of community, these kinds of events, believe it or not, really help on that front. So I just encourage everybody to come out and take part. That's all the reports I have.
I do think we have directors.
We do have directors who might have reports. So commander? Nope? We have no reports from the directors.
In 10 words or less, can you give us an update on the burying of the power lines on Quincy?
Excel subcontractor has re-upped their right-of-way permit. Have I hit 10? Yeah, their, their permit had expired, so they re-upped their permit and they are ready to start the, they say they're starting before the end of the month, again, that's what they say, with the trenching.
On the, on the north side as originally planned?
Yes, there, there are about four or five crossovers, just to, because of where the poles go, but yes, it's 90% on the north side still.
Thank you.
Somebody asked that on your behalf at the last meeting, just so you know.
Mr. Mayor? We do have.
Any others? Oh, city attorney?
I just want to let you all know, I'll be at CML, too. You can find me at every CLE. I'm required to be at all the.
Very good, all right. City clerk? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, any second? Without, without opposition, thanks everybody for coming, appreciate it, and we'll see you all next time. Next time is October 5th.
Yeah.
Yeah.